I got a little clarification today.
Okay. Oh. Okay. Okay. I don't see her. The parking lot was quite full, so maybe she's... Yeah. Yeah. Chairs? Yeah. Oh, it's the end of the trimester too, so kids are getting their... Uh, government... Yeah. Government. Yeah. But I think a lot of these kids are, um, it's, uh, for government. Like, there's Bryce Nadek. Yeah. Yeah, no.
As soon as we're able to.
Yeah.
How's that?
He might, might drive back or whatever after this.
No.
No? Um... I thought maybe you went for hunt... Is that where you usually hunt, or do you hunt out there?
I hunt out here too.
Yeah. Where do you, where do you hunt around here? Okay. Cause, um, we could use your help to deal population out by us. Yes. Uh, we've totaled a couple cars.
Okay.
Yeah. Every, everyone in our family has hit a deer out there except Drew. And Drew's like, "I wanna live here, I wanna know where I'm getting..."
Sorry, folks, we're just a little delayed.
Like, that's not a good thing to wish for.
No, there's...
Yeah. There's just way too many. Oh, thanks.
Now? Okay. I'd like to call to order the November 12th, 2024 meeting of the Celine Area Schools Board of Education, and standing as you are able, please, uh, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, before we begin the meeting tonight, I'd just like to take a moment to, uh, thank those current board members who ran as incumbents in the election for another four-year term, serving the Celine Area Schools community. Brad Gerby, Jennifer Stebbin, and Susan Estep each made the decision to step up, to volunteer, to serve, and for that reason, they have, all of them, earned my respect. Other members of the community stepped up and deserve recognition from the board as well. Kelly Van Single and Sherri Barnett also ran but were unsuccessful in their bid. Their efforts were noted, and I also respect them for their willingness to serve. And finally, in January, we will formally sit two new board members who have not yet served. I'd like to welcome to the Board of Education Darcy Burwick and Jason Tzizitas. If they are in the audience, would you please stand? I think we have, and we have, Darcy is here, yay, Darcy, nice, congratulations. Once again, congratulations to everyone for your willingness to serve, and I'm looking forward to the next year. Uh, I'd like to pass you two, especially for the folks, did I not mention you who's rolling off the board? That's, that's next month. All right, thank you, Steve Latch. Checking in to see if Dr. Allen is in the audience here. Dr. Allen, I'd like to introduce our newest member of our administrative team, Dr. Amina Allen, who is the principal of Liberty School and the Alternative High School, and she's gonna say a word, so, welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Latch and, uh, board members, trustees, couldn't be happier to be here. Um, I'm sure that you have my resume, so you know, um, that, you know, I grew up in River Rouge. Um, I was actually the last, um, uh, class to graduate from the old building, and, um, so there's a lot of history there. Went on to, um, you know, go out of state, um, to an HBCU, and then, uh, Michigan, and then did a short stint in a charter school, seven years in Ann Arbor, where I learned a ton, and now I'm here. Couldn't be happier to be here. Great staff, great central office, great kids, great parent community, and it's been great to see, see that merge together. So, um, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. This is the public comment section of the evening. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that priority will be given, sorry, that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. First, public participation portion of the evening will be limited to one half hour, thirty minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the, uh, rules of common courtesy, and the public participation portion cannot be used to make personal attacks against board members, district employees, or students. So, we begin with the students, we have a few listed up. I'm gonna read the first name to speak and who's on deck, so you'll know, you'll be, get yourselves ready. Cruz Hansen, please, followed by Aiden Burton.
Congrats on your undefeated season going nine and oh. You now have to play at Northville next week, then you have to play at Belleville the following week. My name is Cruz Hansen, I'm a sophomore here at Celine High School, and I'm on the football team. The reason I'm speaking today on behalf of Team 122, my coaches, student athletes in Celine, and particularly the seniors, is because I'm not opening the playoffs on the road after we go undefeated again next year. The fact that we are yet to hear from anyone about actions that impacted our football program is inexcusable. We deserve more from the athletic department. All we've heard from the district superintendent is what a great job the athletic director has done. Do you know what happens to me if I run the wrong round in practice? All I hear across the field is, "Cruz Hansen!" Do you know what happens if my grades don't make the cut? I don't play that week. What I'm trying to say is that we, as student athletes, are held accountable for our actions, and the only people that have been held accountable for this, for certain decisions that have affected the football program this year is us, the players. There's clearly an issue that needs to be fixed. I'm part of the Celine Athletic Department, and I'm calling for a unanimous vote in favor of an independent review of the program. If you vote against an independent review, then be willing to stand up in front of all of us and tell us nine and oh does not matter.
Thank you, Aiden Burton, of course, and followed by, I'll, I'll read his name in a second, Jack B.
Uh, how's it going? My name is, uh, Aiden Burton, and I'm a senior on the Celine football team. This is my third time speaking to the board, so I'm here today to express my frustration about how no one from the athletic department has come forward and taken blame or even said, "I'm sorry," as we, the players, had to suffer from the consequences of someone's laziness and inability to do their job. I just find it ridiculous that even after our season has finished, not a single soul has come forward to take accountability. While my time playing with high school football is finished, I have teammates who I see as brothers that still have a year or more left, which is why I'm hoping that instead of being stubborn and not taking the blame, uh, someone can come forward and show us, young men, a good example of how we should act like when in the wrong, how to show remorse and being apologetic, because as of right now, I am disgusted with the lack of accountability. Thank you, it is still Team 122 versus everybody.
Calling up Jack Bur... Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Um, good evening, good evening, board. Uh, my name is Jack Berseder, and I'm a junior on the varsity football team. I thought the worst thing that could happen to me this season was being sidelined by injury, but I was wrong. The worst that happened was our team being sidelined by our own athletic department. In life, our parents, teachers, and coaches teach us to try and be the best version of ourselves. Celine schools should lead by example and be the best they can be. I'm requesting an independent review of the, of the athletic department, so they can be better too. Thank you for your time.
Isaac Furlong. Followed by Coleman Ross.
Good eve... Good evening, I'm Isaac Furlong, and I want to thank the board members and the president and the superintendent for allowing me to have the ability to speak tonight. As a senior football player and athlete in three varsity sports, I want to address the issue with the board members' lack of follow-through with the previous agenda items involving, involving the football team. I believe that if an issue or a problem is not complete, then it should be an agenda item at every board meeting until conclusion is reached. As a student, we look up to our administration, teachers, and leadership to show us the way and demonstrate the correct approach, so we, so we, as students, are able to model our behaviors the right way going through, going, going forward in life. There are no shortcuts in life or in high school, so there, so there should be no shortcuts with this issue we have with our football team. It's a very disappointing the way the entire situation has been handled. As administrators, believe ev... Believe everything will just disappear because the football season has ended, but that's not the case. We still have to make it right for, make it right for seasons to come. We have an athletic director that acted like an ostrich pudding, its head in the sand all football season. It's a shame Ashley missed almost every regular ga... Every regular season game and all postseason, as she should have supported the team in no ma... No matter the circumstances. Where is her leadership? Please continue to address the issues we have and have them as an agenda item until conclusion is reached and make all wrongs right, thank you.
Thank you, Isaac Coleman, thank you. Followed by James Rush.
My name is Coleman Ross, and I was a senior and a captain on the football team. I'm here today to ask again for an independent review of the athletic department. I may be done playing with Celine football, but I don't want what happened to my senior class to ever happen again. I know you have heard about the many ways that we have been impacted by the errors made in the athletic department this season, but I wanted to bring one more to your attention. I was blessed to be named first-team all-conference this past week. The number of athletes who are recognized on these teams are partially determined by your team's position in the conference at the end of the season. So, because of the forfeits we were forced to take, the number of student, Celine student athletes on the SEC all-conference team was limited. Dexter, who we handily beat on the field, had more student athletes recognized than we did. Now, you may not think that is a big deal, but my teammates worked so hard, and many of them deserved recognition. College coaches, they look at wins and they also look at awards, and both of those things were taken from our team, and yet nobody has been held accountable. What we are asking for is an independent review to improve things. I really don't understand why that is asking for too much. There are hundreds of students impacted by the, by the athletic department every single year. Don't we want to have the best, best department possible? If there are improvements to be made, shouldn't you want to make them? Thank you for your time.
Hi, uh, my name is James Rush, and I'm a junior on the varsity football team here at Celine High School. Our season just came to an end this past Friday. Many of my classmates, friends, teammates, and people around the community have reached out with congratulations on a great season. While I do agree greatly appreciate the words, and I know it comes from a genuine place, I still feel a deep sickness in my stomach about how our season played out. Everyone on the board is familiar with us having to forfeit the first three games of the season due to a lack of eligibility check by the AD. If you are not aware, this was an era in 2024 and in 2023. The board is also aware of one of my teammates who had to end his senior year after Week Three, and we have yet to see the potential negative impact that this will have on his future. We are all also aware of the direct racism that individuals in this team had to face just prior to our third game of the season versus Pioneer. Through all this adversity, we came together as an extremely tight-knit team. We chose to stand by one another and not let others outside of our locker room derail us or change our vision. Our coach has brought back in many, many life lessons that we will be able to carry with us for the remainder of our lives, and I am thankful for that. What I'm still frustrated with is the lack of leadership from adults in the AD. We, as student athletes, have had to take the burden upon ourselves, and no adult has been held accountable. After our only loss of the season, our coach took about accountability, letting us know he did not prepare us well enough. We have yet to have someone take leadership and accountability to let us know they made a mistake, and it was their fault. Not one time this season has the AD addressed our team about anything that has happened. Even our coach asked them to. They should be showing us real leadership, but instead, they have been hiding and taking zero accountability. The AD has a duty to check all eligibility of our student athletes. The MHSAA states their harshest penalty is game forfeitures, which means that our football team and AD received the worst penalty possible from the MHSAA. If I, as a student, made a mistake at Celine Area Schools with the harshest penalty, I would be expelled or severely suspended. This makes me question how we handle adults who make errors that impact our students here at Celine. So, I hope you will take action. We need a review into the AD, and we need something to change, and it isn't just about football. Why wouldn't you want this to happen? What is there to lose? If everything is great, then I guess you will find that out. If there are improvements to be made, then things can be fixed. Let's be transparent about all of this, do something instead of just talking about it. Thank you for taking your time to hear my voice tonight.
Leah Mueller. I think on a slightly different topic. Maybe not?
Um, hello, everybody, my name is Leah Mueller, and I'm a senior and one of the drum majors for the Celine marching band. And I just wanted to highlight that all of these issues surrounding the football game forfeitures reached well beyond just the football team. Um, it has also impacted more than two hundred kids from the marching band, color guard, and the dance team, and all of us spend several hours practicing each week, and football games are one of the main events where we perform, and we only get to go to the home games. So, these forfeitures cost us several games of performances, and it was already a very short season with only four home games, and so we were hoping to have more, and we were not allowed to. Um, so, and then there's also funds that are raised and home game concessions that can go to multiple programs that benefit kids in grades five through twelve, and all of these funds were lost through several home games that we did not get. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Leah, Larry Osterling has a very, very brief comments maker.
Thank you. Yes, um, on a lighter note, um, some of you may be aware of it, but last Thursday, Rotary, who hosted a recognition of Paul Tebow, longtime principal, Paul's a friend of mine, and, um, it was very, and there was a number of, there was over fifty people there, a lot of them are former educators, and the highlight of it, I had written up a script, the highlight of it was a video that was put together by your guy, Ben, Ben Goodman over there. And I, I, I debated whether to come here and call him out in public because he didn't want to be recognized in public, but I said, "What the heck? Ben, you did a great job, people really appreciate it, and it's things like this that the school system can do out there in the public." It just really makes it a, you know, makes us proud to be in this community. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna call up Amy Teslin, followed by Tiffany Alexander.
Thank you, Celine Area School Board. Um, I want to support the football team and families through all the recent hardships as well, but I'm also here to speak, uh, to the diversity, equity, inclusion policy proposed changes. While I don't speak for the DIC, I am someone who was asked to facilitate the original DEI Advisory Committee to the District by the previous superintendent in 2019 and 2020, and I have been a committee member since 2021, when it became an advisory committee to the board. Uh, if you're like me, maybe you didn't realize there was a significant difference between when it was advisory to the district and versus advisory to the board. I actually didn't realize this until over a year ago, or about a year ago, when a very bright member of the DIC with an outside perspective shared the difference. An advisory committee to the board is accountable to the board, and the board is accountable to the community and its constituents. An elected body or board makes decisions and has to discuss and vote publicly. This is what the Open Meetings Act addresses, OMA. Based on this, I propose that the changes ensure that the board decides who is on the committee or at least appoints the co-chairs and determines the process. This mirrors the Sex Ed Advisory Board, which is not only SAS policy, but is also Michigan law. I also propose as an advisory committee to the board that the DIC keeps making recommendations instead of giving less defined insights that can't be tracked, and that they are public and that the board clearly votes to accept them or not, always being public, transparent, and accountable to your constituents. The DIC gives recommendations to the board as defined by OMA, so hopefully, all students are free to learn by removing as many barriers as possible to that learning. Our members come from many perspectives, Christian, Hindu, Jewish, Muslim, Republican, Democrat, people of color, black, white, Asian, Arabic, Hispanic, immigrants, people with disabilities, people without, non-binary, straight, and queer, people with less money or more money. Can we solve all the world's problems? No, but can it help? I sure hope so. What the board is proposing actually removes any decisions or accountability by the board and puts it all on the superintendent and the district staff. This does not seem to align with OMA and not with the way CAB law is written. I'm not saying that this was the intention of the changes. What I am saying is that the board is the elected body, and it should be the board making the public decisions. Right now, the community and the board should be protecting our teachers, staff, and administrators from attacks based on decisions that should and have been made by the elected board. And lastly, unrelated, as a high school biology teacher, please pass the CAB recommendations as is. There has always been more than two sexes and genders.
Thank you. Tiffany, before you come up, may I have your notes? They, they were very clear, and I, I was the person who made the recommendations to change, may I? All right, thank you. No, not yours, A- A- Amy's notes.
Oh!
Yours might be brilliant too, thank you.
I thought you meant the ones I was at the meeting with, and I'm like, I didn't bring them.
Okay. So, I want to start by giving my full support to the football players in an independent review of both the athletic director and the superintendent for the actions that caused the forfeiture of these games. By independent, I want to be very clear, I mean, it would be nobody on the board and nobody who has ever had any, uh, direct, uh, experience, work experience, volunteer, otherwise, attorneys, or anything else with Celine Area Schools. Um, so I wanted to throw that out there first. Second, when it comes to the DIC policy, and I'm glad to send this in whole to anybody who would like it, I'm going to read the relevant portions of OMA. Furthermore, an advisory body without express decision-making authority is not a public body under OMA. Over time, with this board and other leadership in this district, we hear repetitively, "What it says is not what it says." We heard this with the administrative guidelines. What it says is not what it says. But I, I, I know how to read, and I can read what it says. Now, I'm gonna read the next relevant portion. In Pine Brook versus City of Warren, Michigan appellate court holding that a review committee was not a public body subject to the OMA because the ordinance that created the committee did not grant the committee with authority to make final licensing decisions, which was retained by the city council. The court found that a lack of express grant of authority to exercise governmental or propriety authority or to perform a governmental or proprietary function was determinative. Okay? So, OMA does not apply. Next session, section. Advisory committees, which I want to be very clear, an elected, election, elected committee such as the policy committee is not the same as an advisory committee, the diversity, equity, and inclusion advisory committee. The OMA does not apply to committees and subcommittees composed of the less than a quorum of the full public body if they are merely advisory or only capable of making recommendations concerning the exercise of governmental authority. So, the entire discussion on recommendations versus insights is disingenuous because it literally says it is because we only make recommendations that we are not subjected to OMA. So, it, it's a disingenuous con- conversation to begin with, which, again, we've already seen before, many times. Lastly, I ask that the board accept the sex ed policy, uh, in its full form.
Thank you very much. Cory Belote, and followed by Shelby Wrightmeyer.
Good evening, I'm Cory Belote, she/her, Celine resident and parent of one alumnus and two seniors. I have two items that I wanted to comment on tonight. Uh, the first one was, I was a member of the DEI Advisory Committee to the school board from the fall of 2020 through June of 23, when my term ended. During those three years, the committee went through many iterations but remained an advisory committee to the board, consisting of up to twenty members, including three school board trustees. So, I don't understand why this is set to be, or to be discussed about being changed, especially given that DEI initiatives are being eliminated state by state. DEI is still crucial in Michigan, and we owe it to our children, their teachers, and the staff to support and celebrate their differences, providing a safe space for everyone. By changing the role of the DEIAC from providing recommendations to merely providing insights, it gives the appearance that the committee is perceived as less important. Regardless of whether the intention is to diminish DEI, perception matters, and percept, perception becomes reality. Number two. You have a recommended motion to approve the sex education curriculum as proposed by the Sex Ed Advisory Board. I want to express my full support for an updated inclusive curriculum. Kids know who they are, they may not have the right words to describe themselves yet, and it may take years for them to fully understand, but they do know. An inclusive curriculum supports all kids, and that is imperative. Thank you.
Shelby, and followed by Nicole Gibson.
Good evening, my name's Shelby, oh.
R-E-I-T. M-E-I-E-R.
Lots of I's and E's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I'm Shelby Wrightmeyer, I'm a little bit new to Celine. I moved here from Minnesota to be close to my niece and nephew that go to school here. I, when I was back at home, I worked restorative justice within the public school systems, eleven different school districts. We worked really hard to create an all-inclusive anti-bullying campaign within the three-county region. And when I came here, I had to say I was a little shocked... And when I came here, I had to say I was a little shocked to hear some of the news that was coming from Celine's school districts. I am here in support of the three people that spoke before me. I don't know all the terminology, and I'm not going to pretend to, but as a therapist, restorative justice facilitator, I worked child protection in the past. I want my niece and nephew to have a safe place to go to school. I want them to learn about their bodies and that of anybody's. It's anatomy. So I support D E I initiatives. We are more closely alike than we are different, and we need to not be so afraid that someone's a little bit different than us, but we need to understand them. And if there's something about sex ed that maybe it's a moral issue for a parent or something like that, that's at your home. You know, that's not at the school. There's a separation between church and state, and I think we need to create a safe space for all children to go to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole Gibson, followed by Marcy Goya.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you that I have not had the pleasure of meeting in my classroom, my name is Nicole Gibson. I am a fifth-grade teacher at Heritage. I'm not sure how many of you have actually had the chance to take a look at the full proposed adolescent health curriculum in its entirety before tonight's meeting, but I, along with my colleagues, urge you to read through the entire curriculum before casting your vote. Please don't just rely on the slides that have been presented, as they do not cover all that will be taught or discussed during these lessons. Additionally, two-thirds of the fifth-grade teachers do not agree with the curriculum as proposed because we don't feel that it is age-appropriate. While this is the first time that I am speaking publicly on this topic, I have watched the other meetings, and it appears that some of the board are under the impression that we are uncomfortable discussing this material with our students. Please let me assure you, it is not that we are uncomfortable discussing challenging, hard, maybe sometimes awkward topics with our students. We are strictly concerned with the age-appropriateness of the content. For example, the CEAB has stated that masturbation is not being taught in a sexual manner. However, the word "sex" is mentioned multiple times in every lesson, and students are even told how to clean up after oneself. If two-thirds of the fifth-grade teachers have these concerns, we can only deduce that there would be additional staff in other buildings who feel similarly if they have had the time to fully delve into the curriculum. In actuality, there have been teachers at Heritage who have voiced similar concerns over the age-appropriateness of this curriculum and stated that they feel their concerns will not make a difference in the outcome. We would appreciate the opportunity to meet as grade-level teams so that we can examine the content and come to a consensus on what we believe would be appropriate to teach to children at this age, prior to the Board of Education casting a vote. Lastly, there is still confusion and concern over whether or not we, as a building or grade level, can make changes once curriculum is approved. As a board, there's not been really a consensus on this. We are seeking clarification and a solid answer on if changes such as wording or eliminating content can be done after the curriculum has been voted on. It seems that as a board, you would like to see the final curriculum that has been agreed upon amongst staff, buildings, and grade levels. Thank you for your time and consideration. We're in the end. All we want is for what's best for our students. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Marcy Goya, another fifth-grade teacher at Heritage, as I've spoken to you previously in regards to this. I want to reiterate that there are a lot of teachers that feel like our voice is not being heard when it comes to the adolescent health curriculum that you are about ready to vote on. When I first spoke at this meeting about this topic, I expressed that teachers wanted an opportunity to work collaboratively together to provide our feedback. You asked if two weeks would be enough time. I said no. Nevertheless, we were just given a slightly more anonymous survey to fill out, and that was it. That, from what I understand, that survey results was reviewed by an instructional design person within the district and only a couple of members of the CEAB board to make some changes that were doing that. At the last board meeting, we shared our concerns about our feedback is not being used. After that, after the board meeting, it was brought to our attention, actually by some CEAB board members, that they themselves had not met as a whole board to discuss our survey results, our new survey results, or even to decide on some of the changes that were being proposed. At this time, the staff has not had the opportunity to meet and collaboratively create a curriculum we feel is age-appropriate and more current than our current curriculum. We want to do this. We want to meet collaboratively together to create something that we feel like is age-appropriate, that we can come to a consensus, that you will feel comfortable voting for, we will feel comfortable presenting to you. We would like to present a curriculum that we are all on board with. I hope that you would consider that. We feel like the opportunity to come to consensus and find a curriculum that we can all agree on is age-appropriate and is going to help for our students. That opportunity to do that has not happened, so we just ask that you consider that before you vote today and maybe push the vote again to give us that opportunity and make the arrangements so that we do have the time and effort to be able to do that collaborative work. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Hurst, followed by Libby Williams.
First, I'd like to give a shout out to the drummer, because I was very moved by what you had to say, and I have solidarity with the marching band, so it sounds like we need to have a fundraiser for them to make up for the deficit. But I'm speaking tonight as a parent and as an individual who is non-binary and a parent of a non-binary individual. When my child had sex ed last year in fourth grade, they had a very horrible traumatic experience. They did not appreciate the being separated into genders, the awkward passing in the halls, not feeling included in the curriculum, and I opted them out. I wasn't expecting to do that, but I felt the need to do that because they were so uncomfortable. And I think the changes that are being proposed are in step with the realities of my children's lived experiences and what kids are facing. This curriculum is 20 years old. It needs to be updated, and it needs to include me, because sometimes I want to look around in our community and ask, hey, I'm queer, I'm non-binary, do I have a right to life? Because too often, and too much recently, we've heard that, like, I don't, that my child is going to hurt someone or attack someone, or like, they're being vilified, and it's disgusting. Youth are being vilified. And we also witnessed how misogyny and the gender binary can kind of seep into things. You might look at a person and make an assumption of what they might speak to, and it turns out to be something completely different. I am also the parent co-chair of the D E I A C, and I'm speaking just as an individual. When I first joined the '22-'23 school year, we spoke extensively about having public open meetings, which is what I wanted, which is what we had in Loudoun County, Virginia, where I served for two years. But people are afraid. We have youth on the committee. They are afraid. Like, I think it's great that we have youth on the school board here. It's great. But the reality is, youth on the D E I A C aren't comfortable being this public, and I wish that would change. Also, we should have that virtual meeting because we're a diversity and inclusion advisory committee. I'm disabled. You know, that disability isn't always going to cause a long-term illness, but it might just be like, hey, I have no spoons today. I need to stay home and Zoom into this meeting. But we need to do it effectively, and I think that we can look into having better Zoom options. So thank you for your time.
I haven't been up here in a while. My friend Amy Teslin did an amazing job laying out the legal and procedural reasons for keeping the status quo in the D E I C, so I will speak for its necessity. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are more than just buzzwords or boxes to be checked off by the administration. These terms represent social, racial, and economical injustices that are at the forefront of communities worldwide. Even before the election, these were real problems for families and students in our community, and now some of them are even more frightened. This board needs to acknowledge that the intersectionality of students' identities and the challenges faced by individuals with multiple marginal identities. The D E I A C is more important now than ever for our schools. It needs to be protected from bias, unconscious, or otherwise. It needs to be allowed to function at full capacity and give its educated recommendations and advice to the school board. It needs to represent those in Celine schools who feel unseen, unheard, and undervalued. Finally, I encourage the board to pass the CEAB's recommendations. Not everyone is going to agree on what they feel. Kids are ready to learn, parents know, the kids know, and this has not been updated in quite some time, and I think it's time that it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's the end of the public comment for now. There is a second one at the end of the agenda. I have no response immediately to a previous public comment. I'd like to move on to the agenda. Excuse me. Setting of the agenda. Items can be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, or the order can be changed at the request of an individual board member or superintendent, and the agenda has to be approved before proceeding further. Do I have a motion to?
I have a motion to revise.
I'm sorry?
I have a motion to revise the agenda as printed?
Oh. Okay. You can do it without a motion at this point.
Okay, well, I'd like to revise the agenda.
First of all, what we can do is just have a motion to approve the agenda, and then we can have a discussion about any items that we want to add on with that work.
I just soon.
Procedurally, I don't think that's correct.
No, I think we revise it.
I think there's a motion to revise the agenda.
Okay, then you're making a motion to revise the agenda?
Yep.
So to approve the agenda as revised?
Yeah, approve the agenda as revised.
Do we have a second?
I want to make the motion.
Oh, okay. I thought that was it. Go ahead.
So I'd like to add an action item, and preferably a, direct Superintendent Lodge to have an independent third-party review of the athletic department.
Support stubbing.
So let me kick off the discussion by saying, first of all, as board president, if anyone has a moment to look up policy 0166, they'll see that, yeah, we can add items to the agenda as long as I'm in concurrence with it. Now, we've had these conversations, as long as I'm in concurrence. Secondly.
I'm happy to read that for you.
I just, well, aloud, give me a second. I've got a few other things to add as well, but if you want to call that up. Go ahead.
So.
It's the first paragraph.
Well, I'm talking about the end of the paragraph.
Yeah.
So as the policy expert, as you all like to call me, the policy 0166 agenda, the very last sentence says, "The order of business may be altered and items added at any meeting by a majority vote of the members present." Additionally, that's here in our agenda where you can add, an individual board member can request to add and revise the agenda, so it's.
At the concurrence of the board president?
No.
Where are you looking? Here, do I have to look it up now again? Happy to.
So is the agenda wrong?
Well, that's just one of the several items. Secondly, Tim, just a note and the rest of the board, it is on the agenda already in closed session tonight. We will be discussing the review of this. The other reason is that it relates to, first of all, you would like a review of the, could you clarify what it is you're asking for?
Do we want to continue, do we want to have a conversation about the, do we want to discuss this now, or do we want to wait until it's on the agenda?
I want clarification of what you just asked.
This is a board of seven, not a board of one.
I understand.
So I think we need to vote on this.
I want to be clear about what you just asked for. Could you repeat what it is you had asked for? Was it a?
A third-party, independent third-party review of the athletic department.
Okay.
And this is not, you can drill down to whatever you want to drill it down to, a person, one sport, that's on you. That's not what I'm asking for. I am asking for a third-party review of the entire athletic department.
I understand. And our responsibility is not, as a board, now, you're going to, I can let you finish, Tim. Our responsibility is not to supervise the athletic department. Our responsibility is to supervise Steve at this point.
We govern the district.
Yes.
We govern the district.
You know what? I'm happy to have a conversation about this without being cut off.
I've already had many conversations with you about this.
With me, but not with the board. The next thing is that I am concerned, I'm sorry? Well, hang on. I'm concerned that if we have this discussion, that this is part and parcel of a complaint that's come before the board, and their main remedy for resolving the complaint against our superintendent was an independent review of the athletic department. That's why this is all bound up with a complaint against Steve.
This has come up numerous times. This is not just one sport.
All right, we have a couple people want to speak, and I, so I made my case, my point. Jennifer, and then Jennifer. Jenny and Jennifer.
So I just wanted to say that I think that it's a bit out of order, and I'm not saying that I'm not ever in favor of having this discussion in open session. I feel that this idea of a third-party review has not even been discussed in closed session as it pertains to the superintendent. The questions that were asked, when they were asked, there was given no opportunity for an answer before the immediate call for the review. I think that we have due process, and we owe due process to the superintendent, we owe due process to the athletic department, we owe due process to our students, and I think that by having, and by having a discussion in closed session, by having a discussion in closed session that does not prohibit us from coming back and making a motion afterwards, but I think that when I spoke to Dr. McVeigh, I said that my fear was... Can I speak?
I'm not stopping you. You mean, could I please ask, it's the audience, it's the audience that's kind of interrupting at this point. Should you please show some decorum while we're here from the rest of the board members? Thank you.
So there are a lot of unanswered questions that need to be addressed before that, and not to mention, I said this to you a week ago, that if we were going to discuss this publicly, I feel that it is dire that we have advice from legal counsel on what areas can be discussed so that we don't have a FERPA violation and further litigation. So I asked for that. I said either advice ahead of time on what is allowable and/or counsel here present so that we don't, you know, dip into areas that could cause further litigation. I think we owe it to the due process to have these questions that have been submitted, answered in closed session, and then at that time, if the result is unsatisfactory, that we return. I think the biggest thing that is happening is that because this involves individual people and due process, it's not that things aren't happening, it's that things, when they're related to an individual, we have to be, we have to consider their privacy. And so even though it may seem that nothing has happened, we know in our discussions that things have been put in place, and so we can have a discussion in closed session. I've also asked Steve if the answers that are given to us can be written in a way that can be released publicly without a FERPA violation so that the public can know the actions that have been made without, you know, while still, yeah, without endangering the district and without violating someone's public.
What questions are you talking about?
The ones that you submitted.
The ones that I submitted, because it was one more hurdle President McVeigh asked me to go through.
Yeah, because we.
And those questions were very, very. And, and, and those questions were very, very, very thousand-foot level. They weren't direct.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the questions. No, let me just clarify.
At this point, you're in. And I'm frustrated.
At this point, you're engaging in some clarifying point, right?
Yeah, but I'm frustrated that those questions even got to Superintendent Lott that then got to the athletic department to be answered.
Because of due process, Tim.
Tim, excuse me, Trustee Austin, could I just clarify something? You sent those questions to the superintendent.
To the board.
You sent them to SAS Board. It is a loop of emails that includes a number of people. Including Betty Yonkey and including Steve.
It didn't used to be that way.
Well, I, so I understand your frustration with that, but you actually sent, I never sent them to Steve. No one on the board did, except for you.
The complaint was actually sent to the superintendent when the parents requested that it not be sent to them.
And I don't know who.
They were supposed to be notified, and that email got directly sent to the superintendent.
Excuse me, can I, Susan, Trustee Eastep, can I just clarify something? I have a meeting every week with Steve. Every week, he's heard about this complaint, and every week he said, "Can I just see the complaint?" And every week I say, "No." And he has not seen the complaint.
It was sent, because I read it, it was the email forwarded from Trustee Stubben to you, President McVeigh, and Superintendent Lott.
So the original complaint came to Superintendent Lott?
Yes, because, because the vice president said in the email to notify.
I can clarify that. So notification is not forwarding an email.
You all can for ya. I mean, seriously.
Okay, but, but, but the, the rule says that the vice president, upon a complaint to the superintendent, must notify the superintendent, which I did. But, so.
Not just notified that, that there is one, but you sent the entire email with the document to, to him.
No, actually, I, I didn't, and we're getting off topic for, for the motion.
Okay.
Here. What I did is I said that there has been a complaint filed. I have used the same cut-and-paste verbiage to make sure that there's consistency whenever we receive a complaint. In any regard, to be very careful with how I respond to the stakeholders in the community that might be submitting a complaint. And to Jenny's point for due process, Steve is required to be notified. So.
Of the actual, like, details of the complaint?
Not the letter, not, we're getting, we're getting off topic.
But it's right here, October 23rd. "Hi, Steve and Michael. By way of this email, I wanted to inform Steve of a complaint." And this was, this was forwarded straight from the emails from the parents.
No, you are getting off topic. Tim has a motion, which I seconded, which we would like to put on this agenda under action, item A, a third-party review of the athletic department. That is the current topic.
Okay, I would ju, I just want to say that everything's kind of been held up, I think, because more information has been shared than should be. So it hasn't been independent. That's what I want to point out.
Okay, and I think what we're asking for, I'm sorry, Brad, just one second. I think what we are asking for is independent. To Tim's point, because I just want to clarify something, we have two email addresses. One is internal at SASBO@, one is external at SASBoard@. Maybe about a month ago, I noticed that people had been added to those distribution channels, that one person had been added to SAS Board, and two people had been added to SASBO. I said something to Michael. I think that's what Tim was bringing up. So sometimes when we get email, it does not just go to the Board of Education. This is going into a separate issue with all of our email addresses not being on the website anymore, separate issue. I would like to have an opportunity, because I was just, Jenny raised her hair and hand first, and I had my hand after, so I would like to move forward with the discussion on the motion. Is that okay?
And now you're making your point now?
Yes. So just a few things with regard to why I would second this motion and have this be added to the agenda. I know there's a lot of passion, and there's a lot of feelings up here and in this room, and I just want to acknowledge that. I would like to calmly state that I think that I totally understand what issues can be discussed in an open meeting and what issues can be discussed in a closed meeting. My intention with the second on this is not to discuss an HR issue. It is a process discussion. Any HR issues should be addressed in closed session, and I see that we have that on, on the agenda for tonight. Number two, at a previous meeting, about 1:00 in the morning, we made a motion to initiate a third-party review around eligibility and enrollment processes and asked Michael to conduct that. It's been, to facilitate that, the words were facilitate.
To facilitate the appeal process between parties, correct?
Yeah, and then the second part was, was around.
Supposed to be a legal independent.
Yes, that's correct.
And that, is that, I'm sorry, I wanted clarity from, is that what we're meeting about tonight, that one?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
We are meet, no, we're meeting about two other issues. One is the complaint that's on the agenda, and I can't honestly remember the other issue. Oh, the collective bargaining issue, and there was.
Okay, so not legal on the first.
I'm prepared to give an update.
Okay, from legal. Okay.
Okay, yeah. So, so just to, just to build upon the second point I was making, we have a public motion out there to initiate a third-party review around eligibility and enrollment process. We have not received an update. I think that is something that should be discussed in open meeting. It's, it's a process decision. Number three, I believe that there are some questions, and I have these also, around who would do this, or cost. I've been thinking about this. And I think that this is totally valid to have questions. I have not been a part of a third-party review before, though the district has gone through them. And I think that that's something that we need to talk about as a board and have the ability to do so legally. Number four, I think student voice is incredibly important. The football players here, both tonight and on other meetings, lacrosse students, other sports. I, I think we are required to have a discussion about their concerns. Number five, I think it's very impactful when students say to me that we are mitigating future opportunities, whether it's academic, athletic, through career and technical trade, through specialized clubs. That's important to me, as well as their, the stress that is on them as well. I think that we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to our community to lead by example and have an open discussion, and that's all I have to say.
I was just saying, I don't, I don't disagree with any of those things, Jennifer, but I think that in order to maintain our obligation to our district employees and their protection, I think that having it in closed session first and then returning to the table is going to mitigate any litigation that could come when a violation of FERPA occurs. I'm not saying that any of those things cannot happen in open session. I think that in, in an effort to hear due process and in an effort to hear what has happened so far, we need to be mindful of, of, of what has been done and what we can share publicly. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I agree with you that we do need to have some of these things in open, but I am not satisfied with the limited information that I have had, because we have not had a closed session on this topic yet. So I am requesting the closed session first, and then I'm happy to entertain a conversation after.
So Jenny, thank you, because, respect the, the back and forth. I can't talk about things that we talked about in close, obviously, but I believe that coming out of the last closed session and us having a motion was the beginning of making a public discussion, so that's just what I.
We can discuss that motion. I just don't know that we can discuss the additional items yet.
I believe Brad is next in the list.
All right, I, I have a couple of things, like, just been trying to take this in and what have you. I do have some pause, I'll tell you. We have policies, and I want to make sure we follow them. 166 does have some things with agenda setting and the president's role and that kind of thing. So, I mean, I would want some clarity on that and how we feel about, about that, okay? I'm okay with us having input. We've had input on previous agendas, I understand that. But just, I want to make sure, one, that I say that aloud, that we're buttoned up on that. I am in concurrence with Jenny about, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to, like, us looking into, whether it's our athletic department or any of our processes or any of our things, but I am telling you as a board member that I need more information that I think I'm going to receive in closed session to be able to inform me of how I would feel about doing an independent investigation. And so, like, right now, I'm kind of on the fence about, like, I'll be honest with you, like, my, so I will inform the public. I see things through a teacher lens in the, okay, and so this is one of my strengths and my weaknesses. Teachers, how we see things is we see things through a development process, right? We see things going through goal-setting and professional development and those kinds of things. And so for us as educators, we believe in this IDP idea that we, we, we have these things that we're always looking to get better and improve upon, right? And so, like, I don't want to necessarily not allow for that to happen, because as a teacher, that's kind of part of quote-unquote "where my heart is," right? On the other hand, if we listen in closed session and we find that, you know what? This is not going to be something where that process would be appropriate or would not be something that would get us the answers we need, then I am more open to it. So like, I guess I say to you, like, I am not sure if I think just the normal improvement cycle and the normal, you know, a principal with their athletic director, with their coaches, with their, is the way to go. I'm not saying I don't think that. I just don't have the information yet.
Point, point.
Anyway, so for me, like, that's where I'm at. So if you want me to change the agenda, I'd rather do it later. Once I have that information, I could say, "Oh, yeah, I definitely want to change the agenda." Because right now, I have no idea if I want to change the agenda or not.
Point, point of, point of clarity with the closed session, sorry. Is this just with the, is this the board hearing the public complaint? Or is this the board hearing from the superintendent again?
Depends on the complaint piece, right? I think that our super, or I think our superintendent and our athletic director definitely have due process and rights and, and that kind of thing, and we want to be protective of those legal aspects.
We're going to.
That doesn't answer my question.
Were you asking the question of me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't know this was.
Then the answer is, we are going to be discussing the complaint that was leveled at or raised to, about Superintendent Lott in closed session tonight so that we can make a decision about how to respond to it, to those people who put it forward. One of the things that they said in their complaint was their remedy, and that was this review. That's why I want to move the review and keep the review in closed session. So we will be discussing it tonight, just not in open session. If we vote that way.
So we're not going to hear from the complaint? Correct.
Tonight, we're doing it the way we've done it with other complaints?
Well, with the due process complaint, actually, it's supposed to come to the board, and it didn't, and it was given a very quick.
Wait, 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 I'm sorry.
It was scheduled very quickly.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
I'm talking about the due process with the student.
The one that we had a year ago or so?
No.
Which one are you?
This was about the expulsion.
Oh, okay.
That happened quickly at the Superintendent Lott and President McVeigh, that you all made the decision to have that hearing. And similar language in the public complaints says that the board makes that decision, and we're going through this whole process that's taking weeks and weeks and weeks. So I'm wondering why, why we can't just call a, to hear from the complainants and have a hearing. Why do we have to meet and talk to the person that they're complaining about before even getting to schedule it in the first place?
Just to clarify, and thank you for asking all those questions. The first question you asked was, "Why did we move so quickly before?" Because that wasn't a complaint, that wasn't a complaint against the superintendent. That was an expulsion appeal hearing. That was different, different process entirely, right?
No, but it says the board decides if they're going to do the hearing or write something in return. So you, as a president, made that decision on behalf of the board. But right now, we're, we're pushing this back constantly with the, yes.
If that's the case, then I may have very well missed that, and nobody called me on that during that evening or anything like that. So I, if I didn't follow the policy correctly, I apologize. Regarding this complaint, we are trying, and first of all, we're following it as precisely as we possibly can make all the faces you want. Jennifer followed the process as accurately as the policy laid out. In fact, one of the parents responded and saying, "It seems all boilerplate and cut-and-paste." And a lot of it was intentionally so, because we're following the policy.
On the due process hearing?
Because there's not a.
Okay, I, I appreciate all the, all this information, because it is, it's good information for us, and I appreciate it. But I do want to get back to the request to revise the agenda. And, you know, I keep hearing back that just because one of these complaints had a, the idea of doing a third-party review, that, it is completely different. I'm not, I'm not asking to rehash that in open session. I am asking that we, as a district, we need to improve. And, you know, back in 2018, when we had the Huckabee one, I, I looked back at my emails, and I even stated that we wanted a report that could see our school with a critical eye and an honest eye, because then we can improve and be better. And that, isn't that what we want with the compass? That's our compass.
Absolutely. My concern, and you know what? I do not disagree with that. I enjoyed reading the Huckabee report, and there were still some issues on there that haven't been resolved. But this, what you're recommending is a target, I'll point somewhere else then. This is a targeted review of the athletic department, not the district. It's of the athletic department. And you're making the case, a broad case, and I think I understand it, Tim, that somebody got it right, that because the athletic department is so integral to the whole district, that we really need to have a good, hard look at the athletic department in order to improve the district. Is that what I'm hearing? Yep. And I don't disagree, except I think that this all, this is the difference. I hear what you're saying. Please hear what I'm saying. This all boils down to a complaint against the superintendent and his. And I'm not sure you're at the table. I'd like to finish up here first. I think this is a complaint against the superintendent and his, doing his job at running and organizing and supervising the athletic department. And that's, your position is one, and my position is a little different, and then I guess I think we may have to put it to a vote.
We'll let, we'll let.
Jennifer.
And I would like to make an addition to it as well.
And I would like to say something, but I don't want to do that ahead of Lauren's first opportunity to say anything, if she would like to or not. I.
I have a clarifying question, actually. The idea of due process. So due process implies to me that this would be looking at a particular staff member or administrator versus a more global review. So I guess I'd like to understand those concerns that I think, Brad, you brought up better. I'm just trying to be, I'm trying to understand, like, the athletic department as a whole doesn't get due process, right? I mean, I don't know. You're, like, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Well, I guess I have a wonderment. Can we, if we choose to bend the agenda now, could we move the closed session ahead of the, like, you know, our discussion on the independence so that we have the information? Because I'm telling you, I'm struggling with if I want to vote yes or no on this agenda move. Like, I might be in favor of it.
Lauren, was your question answered? Okay.
I can answer, Lauren. So in my, in my mind, in my mind, I think that when I saw the questions, I thought to myself, "This is the first time I've seen these questions." And as, as someone who has a responsibility to the district and to our community, I feel that getting answers to those questions is important. And if we are dissatisfied with those questions, that would be moving to the next step. I, there has been a process in place. There has been action taken to, for continuous improvement, and that is connected to individuals, and so that's why I'm, I'm concerned about a FERPA violation. That's why I think we need to have a closed session to discuss those items and whether those answers were satisfactory or not. If we find those answers in the course of. answers were satisfactory or not. If we find those answers in the course of action to be unsatisfactory, then we move to the next step. But we're jumping that step, we're missing that opportunity for due process.
So these questions weren't meant to be answered by the superintendent, to be clear. Tim's email said, I think, a third-party review of the overall program, not looking at a person, specific person's role. And so he proposed some of these questions, and I thought, I thought they were great. So, so it wasn't-
I guess I'm sorry I didn't get an attorney to help me write it. I, I mean, I, I don't know.
Your point then is, because, because he raised these, well, anyway, I-
I think, I think the, the point being, you just, I mean, you demonstrated that you all think it's just about the superintendent. So that viewpoint-
I'm going to renew, like, my, my desire to say, okay, I want to just hear more before I move forward on something that may or may not be a good thing to do.
All right.
Sorry, let me clarify, I was talking about Michael.
Jennifer?
Yes. So I just wanted to correct Brad's language just a little bit, sorry, Brad. I, I really don't want to use the term investigation because I don't like the perception that that word has. I like process review or something like that. Because for me, this is not about an individual, and this is not about Stephen, this is not about individuals in the athletic department. We have broken process, and we have been waiting to move this forward for a while now. And we had a motion that the board passed in open, in an open public meeting two weeks ago with no forward movement, and it's continuing to hurt this community. And it's, it's continuing to hurt the processes that we have internally with enrollment and with eligibility and with coaching staffs and with, with all sorts of things. And one of the, and then I want, I think, if Michael could recognize Tommy, he has his hand up after me. One of the things that I think is really important in a role as a trustee is we have got to protect students, and we have got to insulate this district against liability. And I think we have potential liability issues, and that's one of the reasons I think that we should have a review, an independent third review.
If I could, first of all, before we get to Tommy, and thank you, I'm, I'm actually kind of agitated that you said that, Jennifer, that there's been no forward movement. There's, after spending 10 hours and having this go well beyond the board and well beyond the district, and before you've even heard my update, you've told us that there's been no forward movement. I'm a little, I think this is a bit frustrating. So, Tommy.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Mr. Gravie, you said that you wanted to have further information before you make a decision. My question would be, I know this complaint has come up before and a lot sooner, and when they first complained about it, they said that time is crucial and this needs to be discussed sooner rather than later. So my question is, why, like, why do we need to have more information? Like, why isn't that information already given and discussed? Because I think these kids have been waiting, and I'm not sure whether this is the right thing to do. I think, I think what these kids want the most is, is transparency. And I just want to know why, why this is such a hard issue to get information on.
And I'm, and I'm not naive to, to, to any, that, what you're saying, and I'm not naive to, you know, people feeling this way. I'm not naive to anything you said here about the impacts that this has. I just know that I got recent information with some answers about some processes and some things that have been happening, and I'm telling you, I'm on like 24 hours' notice of it, one, okay? And two, is that like, sometimes like, I, I build, how I build consensus is, or how I build my decision-making process, Tommy, is by listening to others, right? And I process some of the things so that I don't get so caught up in how I feel about a particular thing that I lose sight of that. And so I would welcome the feedback and hearing, like, the, what's actually happening and hearing about that in the closed session. And then the, there are those discussion points, and then we would come into regular session, potentially talk about it even more. And now I'm more informed to be able to say, yeah, I really do want that independent investigation. But right now, I'm like, I don't know. And I, that's a, it's a horrible place for me to be right now, to be honest with you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, also, Tommy, I think that there's a couple of different things at play here. So there was the MHSAA appeal. So that was a, it was a related but separate issue. There was a complaint by a single party, and now there's been a complaint by a group. So all of those have been working through the process. So there have been things that have been happening along the way. Yeah, so that's, that's that.
And to answer, I'm going to come as close to the edge as possible, Tommy, because your question was a question a lot of people here had. We can't talk about it. We can't talk about things that have happened in closed session. We can't talk about attorney-client privileged documents. We do not want to break FERPA and, and risk the, the status of a particular student. And also, there are other issues that are very difficult to say. And I spoke to board members from all over the state at a conference a couple of weeks ago, telling them just how frustrating it was, and they said, I know, we have to do the same thing. As board members, we have to sit on our hands and keep our traps zipped because we cannot share information with the public about certain individuals, especially minors. So Tommy, I appreciate the question, and thank you for the opportunity to share that. In fact, the statement I was going to give about the motion we gave the last time is as, is as vague as, but it comes again as close as we can get. Can we listen to the motion one more time? I think Susan may have wanted an amendment to it, but Brad, could you mind, uh, Tim, I mean, sorry, what's the motion again?
To revise the agenda as printed and make it action item A, direct Superintendent Lott to have an independent third-party review of the athletic department.
Sorry, action item A, what's the, the number?
Like to have it A, so it's before-
8A.
Yeah, 8A, sorry.
Are we ready to move, are we ready to-
Then I'd like to discuss if we could move into closed session between the scheduled report and the action items, so that we'll know and be knowledgeable for that discussion.
So here's my problem with that. Just as everybody's been saying, okay, we, we can't, we want to discuss in closed session because there may be things that are about individuals or an existing, you know, charge against one of our, our superintendent or athletic director, we also then could be having some OMA issues in closed session when we discuss other things that are not part of that. And so therefore, and, and I think that those are completely separate things. We still will have to follow the process on these other things that are already started. We're not saying we're stopping those.
And I, I think later I may want to make amendments, but I think it's clear that we need to actually make sure that it is independent and possibly not have people involved, because this is obviously-
If I could just-
Taken a direction where the response is not internal review.
All right, excuse me, Susan, if I could, point of order, I think you're out of order in that case. We haven't started discussing that issue that Tim would like to raise, but that's, that's a great set of statements to say once we do get to there, okay? If you don't mind me, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Are we prepared to vote on whether we would, to approve the agenda as revised? Seems like we are.
So we're going to move it to 8A?
If, if we- Well, that's where, that's where trustee Austin has recommended, that a motion regarding moving into a third part, doing a third-party review of the athletic department, somebody's got the exact language, I'm sure.
Yeah.
He would like it to go to 8A, independent third-party review. Somebody's written it down, I'm not going to. I think it's, we have it moved by Tim Austin, second, and by Jennifer Stoudamire. Oh.
Can I say that it, that the board versus the superintendent do, like, change that word? Because I think it says superintendent-
Lieutenant Lodge, yeah.
Request the review. I just want to, I don't know that it be the board who's doing that.
I, I'm fine with Superintendent Lott, because this is not, this is completely third-party. It's not about him. He's just going to facilitate getting the organization, in my mind. I mean, we can bring it to, we could have that, have some, you know, have it come to the board for an action item to approve.
Yeah, I just, because the possible complaint that we are talking about is against him as well, so.
That's correct. So she's saying directed, he said direct the superintendent to conduct, and now she's saying she would like it to change to direct, the board will conduct.
Susan, could there be a compromise, and we say something like, and Tim would have the exact language, that together the board and Superintendent Lott would agree to a third-party process review of the athletic department?
Yeah, I think that's where, like, direct Superintendent Lott to have an independent third-party review of the athletic department. So we could, we could require that, you know, whatever agency he recommends could come to the board for approval. You know, I, I would be okay with that.
So I'd be okay with that, but I think we're, I think, I think that's more of like the part two of the discussion, but I'm okay with that. But I appreciate that, you know, Susan's being cognizant of the exact language.
I agree with trustee Eustace's language. If the whole point of a third-party review is to have it be independent, then, and if our superintendent, it seems like, I'm not even sure which way I'm going, and we're going to have the discussion, but the whole point of a third-party review, it seems like an ad hoc, if, if we were to vote to do it, it seems like an ad hoc committee from the board should be choosing the group, because what's the point of having a third-party review if it's picked by-
I, I could go with that, I didn't think about it.
Okay, so with the understanding, and I'm going to ask you to read it one more time, because the language changed a lot, with the understanding that it is already on the agenda for the closed session, a discussion of this, and could come back to open session as an action item, your, pardon me?
I understood that for closed session, we're discussing exactly what's listed, which is disciplinary action against an employee, complaints against a school employee, collective bargaining. So this doesn't necessarily mean that we're discussing the exact same thing in closed. I see it as two separate things.
As I'm saying to you, based on, as I've said earlier as well, based on the complaint, which has its sole, one of its remedies in the complaint is to have an independent review, it's going to be discussed in closed session. So with that understood, I hope you understand that, let me hear the agenda item that you're asking for, and then we'll put it to a vote, Tim, or whoever has the right language.
Direct Board of Education to have an independent third-party review of the athletic department.
Direct the Board of Education to-
Have an independent third-party review of the athletic department.
Superintendent will, sorry, who's doing the directing? I'm, I'm lost on the subject here.
Okay.
Is this what I'm hearing? The Board of Education will conduct? Is that it? Is that what you're saying? And that's the discussion you'd like to have at item 8A? Okay. All in favor, please. We're not going to do a roll voice vote, but if it comes down, if it's not clear, all in favor of changing, of adjusting the agenda, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. So that sounds like five and two. Is that correct? Yeah?
Which was?
Five.
Jenny and Michael, correct.
Yeah, at this point, board member one and board member two. Okay. We are now on to, so, Tim, we are moving this on to the agenda. We are now moving up to scheduled reports. I'm very sorry for the delay, but it was, you know, the democracy in action, right, sir? Thank you very much. I'd like to, if there are folks leaving, if there are folks leaving, you might as well take a pause or a second, Jeff and your partner, your pal, your workmate, your colleague, that's the one.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, yeah. I, I don't think this is his first rodeo. All right, for those who are following along in your playbooks, item 7A, the audit report, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Higgins, Plant Moran, and-
Rene Esper.
Thank you. If you give us a second, we can just go through our board packs to find your, your highlights, too. Oh, there it is, thank you. Boy, I really wasn't paying attention. There it is.
All right, well, shifting gears just a little bit. Again, my name is Jeff Higgins, with me is Rene Esper, we're with Plant Moran. We are the school district's independent CPA firm, here to talk about the results of our audit for the financial statements for the district's year ended June 30th, 2024. So there's three documents related to our audit of the financial statements that are presented to the board that come out of the audit process. There's the financial report with supplemental information, which contains the district's audited financial statements. There's a separate federal awards supplemental information, which contains our audit of the federal programs administered by the district. And finally, there's the report to the Board of Education, which provides information on the audit process and results. So again, as the district's independent auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit, conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. And I'm pleased to report here tonight that based on the results of our various audit procedures, we have rendered what's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. So this would be the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide on a set of financial statements. So the activities of the district are reported in various different funds to show how the particular expenditures for which specific revenue was used. But we're going to really focus tonight on the general fund, as the general fund will be the primary operating fund of the district. And Renee will walk us through some of the financial highlights, again, for the general fund.
All righty. So this slide here presents the district's general fund balance sheet. The balance sheet represents a snapshot in time of balances as of June 30th, 2024, and then prior years, June 30th, 2023. So the first top section that summarizes the district's assets, total assets of 32.3 million, which you can see is made up primarily of cash and investments of about 20.5 million, and then 11.5 million in receivables, which that's primarily due from the state for July and August state aid payments. And then the next section, there's the liabilities, and that totals 14.8 million as of June 30th, 2024. And that's, you can see, is primarily accrued payroll or wages and benefits for employees who are paid during July and August. And then the difference between your total assets and total liabilities is the fund balance of 17.5 million. And then the next slide there, so this slide summarizes the total general fund revenue, looking at 2024 on the left and then 2023 on the right. And as you can see, in total for 2024, it's about 74.9 million compared to 78.7 million in prior year. And the decrease primarily relates to the federal sources, that orange slice of the pie there. And that's primarily due to one-time emergency relief funding that was received in 2023. And then otherwise, you can see majority of the district's revenue continues to be that teal color, the state revenue, which was about 72% of revenue in fiscal year '24. That's all set by the state and driven primarily by the people count. And then the remaining sources of revenue is inter-district sources and then federal and local sources. And then the next slide there, so this, similarly, but this is the general fund expenditures, and it's classified by their object code, and it compares again to 2024 and then 2023. And then the next slide there, so this, similarly, but this is the general fund expenditures, and it's classified by their object code, and it compares again to 2024 and then 2023. Looking at the left, you can see the district has total expenditures of about 73 million for fiscal year 24, which is comparable to the previous year. And then you can see salaries and benefits continues to make up that largest component as expected year over year.
The next slide, we have a history of the general fund revenue over expenditures. This is essentially like the net income for the general fund for the year. So you can see the history for several years going back up to 2019, effectively, the district was hovering around a break-even level. 2020, you can see, had a little over a million dollars of net income, if you will, and then during the COVID years, you will see there are some different kind of fluctuations in, in the net, net income. As, you know, there was various COVID funding that came in, when schools were being operated remotely, the cost structures were changed. Now that we're back in 2024, we're really brought back to more of a normalized cost structure. So most of the COVID relief dollars have now been expended. Operations are kind of back to normal, so districts are starting to get into more of a, kind of a normalized operation. But you can again see for, for 2024, based on the revenue of 74.9 million, the expenditures of 73 million, there is roughly 1.8 million dollars of additional funds added to the district's fund balance. So this next slide looks at the fund balance history. So again, as Rene mentioned, the fund balance is effectively the assets minus the liabilities of the district. It's really represents the financial reserves of the district. So it allows the district to fund unplanned expenses, helps insulate the district against unexpected revenue losses and other funding instabilities that might pop up throughout the year. So it is an important metric that's, that's monitored, certainly monitored at the state level. So then the question becomes, what is an adequate level of fund balance? So fund balance is often assessed as a percentage of your expenditures. So if you take your fund balance, about 17.4 million divided by your expenditures of 73 million, that gives you a percentage as of June 30th, 2024 of about 23.9%. You can see historically where the district's spend compared to state average, so Celine's the darker blue bar, and the state average is that teal bar. So for several years, the district was a bit below the state average fund balance percentage. Over the last couple of years, the district has caught up, and you can see in 2023, you're right at about the state average percentage of fund balance. It's important to know that various school finance organizations do recommend a fund balance percentage of somewhere in that 15 to 20% range, so you would be right at about where you would be recommended to be, but it is still important to keep watchful over your fund balance and make sure you are keeping up that, that adequate level of reserve. So that was our, our summary of the year ended June 30th, 2024. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to address those this evening.
I had a quick question. When might we find out about the actual statewide average for fund balance?
So the numbers are reported on November 1st, so those numbers will be coming in now. I would expect it probably might go up a little bit, as again, we're sort of at the end of those COVID years. Historically, that percentage was sort of in that 10 to 15% number. So as you can see, going back to that last slide, if you go back pre-COVID, it was right around that 15%, and I would expect that now that we're getting more of a normalized environment, it'll probably start to decline again. But those numbers are published, probably I'd have to rely on wherever the state gets the numbers together, or probably December timeframe, I would expect.
Thank you. Is there, like, just for my own interest, is there a memo or a report or a budget?
There's actually very detailed state bulletins that they publish.
Bulletin, that's what.
Yes, there's, there's a, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but they include financial information of all districts sorted by, you know, individual districts, district by size, you know, based on student count, so there's a significant amount of information available at the state compiles.
I appreciate that deep background. Any other questions, Brad? Treasurer Gerby?
So I have three items that I would like to do. Number one, obviously, having a clean and unmodified audit refers once again to the incredible work of Miranda Owsley in our finance department, so I want to make sure I say that out loud. She's a, she's really good at her job. Okay, yeah, that's, I like it, okay? She is outstanding at her job, and because she's outstanding at her job, I look good as the treasurer. And so the reality for me is I get to just take all the credit, and, and I deserve none of it. So, so that's that. So Branda, thank you for being so good at it. All right, the second thing is, your only recommendation that was in there, is that correct, about, was about food service? And there was a food service in, in, and I'm saying this more for the board's knowledge, that we're gonna have, we're exploring. We had a food service thing where we are not allowed to exceed more than three months of?
Three months of operating expenses.
Correct.
So many districts experience the same issue, because again, when the COVID relief funding came through, and you were getting significant federal dollars, and now that the state is effectively paying for school lunches for all children, a lot of districts, similar to Celine, their fund balance exceeded what's the allowable amount in fund balance. And so the district's required to submit a spend-down plan just to get under that three months of operating expenditures.
So we're gonna be doing that, and I can assure you, like, as our finance team, we started talking about those things today, and how are we gonna do that, and how do we go about that process? You know, the, the other thing I would say is this is a byproduct of the partnerships and the, and the, and being good stewards with our structures, right? We've, we're very mindful over the last year of our structures, and one of the things that I will say out loud, I was gonna make this part of my report in a little bit, but is that we had said that we needed to pursue a million dollars in, in rightsizing, if you will, annually for the next three years. And for this year, because of our stewardship, we may, we, we don't think we need to do that right now. So we may come back to that idea, I mean, because we always want to make sure that our structures equal our students. But, and I'm gonna talk about student count during my report a little bit, which is also gonna be a positive thing to say, but, but anyway, but we are not pursuing those items at, at this time. So that would be a positive to come out of this process. And then the third thing is, as I was geeking out about it, because I tend to probably spend more time with this thing than, than anyone. Talk to me about the piece you had in there about the estimated revenue conference and your prediction that, that sales tax revenue may not be as robust going forward as it has been.
So I think you're referring to our comments in our board letter. So really, I was just trying to get an understanding of how the future is gonna look and what funds might be available to fund, obviously, education. So the sales tax under Proposal A, you know, they went from four to six percent, and that additional two percent is really what funds public education to a large extent. So it is a, a key metric, and I think, you know, just trying to make sure that those funds are gonna be available to continue the current level of funding for, for districts is the, the critical piece.
Didn't you say in there that you anticipate that there may be a leveling off, or you anticipate that through the revenue conference, there might be?
Well, yes, I wouldn't say it's necessarily our prediction, but I think there are expectations that that is gonna level off as the economy stabilizes, now that we're in this sort of post-COVID world, and things are sort of getting back to a typical pace, and it, obviously, a lot of it's just dependent on the Michigan economy and how.
Well, as the treasurer, I'm always looking for things that should have my antenna up a little bit, and so like, that's the thing that's kind of got my attention right there, right? I'm always gonna be looking at our pupil count, and how many dollars are we gonna have to educate kids, right? Like, those are our, whether we like it or not, that's our revenue stream. So, so anyway, so that's why I'm, I'm just concerned. I see that and think, then we may not realize as robust a per-pupil increase going forward as we have. Now, I know that's just like, future who knows, but anyway, I'm just saying it to my board colleagues that, that that was there in this report a little bit. To, that was how I read it. Thank you.
Oh, Jenny Miller.
Um, oh, do you want to go first, sir?
Oh, no, I just wanted to.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I just had a question. Sometimes we do a comparison, I know that you have the state average comparison, but oftentimes, we do a comparison of districts who mirror a lot of the similarity and characteristics of, of us, and so just thinking in our county and surrounding counties of some of the things that we've heard in the news in regards to fund balance. But those districts look and are sizably different than ours. So in terms of, I have a couple of questions, in terms of districts that might be more similar to us, not just as a state average, but more similar to us, how are we measuring up in terms of fund equity with them?
So I don't have these specific numbers.
Yeah, exactly.
Off the top of my head, but I think just anecdotally, because most districts I work with would be similar numbers. Most districts that I would deal with, kind of in southeast Michigan, similar size, would be in that kind of 18 to 22% fund balance range. So certainly, except, most fund balances have gone up pretty significantly since 2021. And certainly being that 20% range is pretty typical.
Okay. And then I know at one point, prior to probably 2020, there was a recommendation for what was a comfortable fund balance. Can you talk to us about what that looks like? I, I feel like, just because I'm, I'm just looking at 23.9%, and it looks great, but also I'm thinking about the rising cost of healthcare, and I'm thinking about the rising cost of just essential materials and things like that, and I'm just wondering how that aligns with the costs that we're passing on to others.
Yes, there's a couple, a couple items there. So as you can see, you know, if you go back to 2019, you're at about 5%. So that was really, there was a lot of concern about that level. So the Michigan school business officials would typically recommend a 15% fund balance level. If you go to the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend 15 to 20. So those are some of the, the broad recommendations from kind of a floor fund balance. A number to keep in mind would be 5%. So the state does look at fund balance percentage. They measure it a little bit differently, but basically a 5% fund balance level. And if it's at five, below, at or below 5% for two years in a row, they take that as an indicator of potential financial distress, because the state wants to make sure districts do not go into a deficit. So if you do have indications of financial distress, there's additional reporting and things you have to do to help ensure to the state that you're not going to go into a deficit. So I look at 5% is the floor, 15% is the typical recommendation.
And then just looking back at the slide, I think, let me see if it was one, two, three, four. And I don't know if this is even something that we can predict yet, but there is a lot of talk about federal streams of financial support for school districts potentially being eliminated or moved back to the states, and how, like, if we are thinking ahead to the impact of the dissolution of, say, the Department of Education at the federal level, how would that have a local effect?
So for Celine, if you look at, again, this, this would be slide four, as you can see, your federal revenue was about 1.8 million dollars. So obviously, that's funding that would have to be somehow dealt with if that, those funds went away. Now, federal funds, typically, they are, you know, there are strings attached. They have different, separate, but certain programs have to be spent on certain activities. So obviously, the question becomes, if that funding goes away, do you have to somehow alter those activities that were being funded under that federal program? At this point, obviously, we don't know where things are gonna go, but historically, Celine, like I said, if you look at '23, it was about four, and at 4.9 million of federal funding, again, that's a lot of that was the ESSER funds, other COVID relief funds. I think historically, Celine's probably been around that, you know, one and a half to two million dollars of federal funds that the district has received.
So roughly that, like, 2% number or less?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna chime in real quick, if you guys don't mind. I, I just wrote down on my homework to-do list, Jenny, about the fund balances of local school districts similar to us, and I'll do that homework as the finance chair slash treasurer.
I know, there is, and
That shouldn't be too hard.
Potentially Steve or someone in the cabinet could get you. There used to be a list of districts that we compared ourselves to on a number of measures, not just financials, but on a number of measures.
Yeah, we've, we've benchmarked ourself against for superintendent salaries and for all kinds of things. So, yeah, that shouldn't be a terrible, especially, everyone's kind of doing their audits and doing their reports over this month, the two months, so.
Yeah, I just, I, my biggest reason for that question around, you know, healthy fund balance versus, you know, extra cushion. I, I know I like to see the extra cushion, but I also know that with the rising cost of healthcare, it's creating a big burden for our staff and the contributions that they have to make. So I want to make sure that our cushion isn't at their expense.
I would like to thank you, and thank you for the clean audit, and thank you for the work you do, and thank you for coming to join us this evening. We'll see you again next.
Well, it's not us that provide the clean audit, it's Miranda and the business.
I was gonna say, congratulations to Miranda, thank you.
Yes.
Miranda.
Thank you.
And I always look forward to seeing both of you here at our meeting, so we'll see you next year.
All right. Well, thank you, and have a good evening. Appreciate the time.
Second report. She's standing up. She's walking over Carol Diglio, assist, oh, pardon? Carol Diglio, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, on the hiring process. I need to take a point of privilege for a second.
So I might have to just switch, yeah, just, I'll just give you a thumbs up. Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I had Steve share this PowerPoint, because it's kind of lengthy, so I'm not gonna read all the details. Hopefully, you had a chance to dive in, but I'm really here tonight to honor some of the work that's been done at the district level with all of our building administrators and directors, and kind of wrapping around one of the most important things we do here in Celine, which is hire. Sorry, my clicker, or this clicker isn't working. So one of the greatest gifts we have is educating kids and making sure that we have the right people with kids. And education is a powerful tool, and we need to get it right at all levels. So one of our greatest challenges right now is to make sure that we are getting the right people on the bus, but more, more importantly, having them in the right seats. It's hard for me to talk about the hiring process without talking about the other areas that we've implemented, so that we are making decisions and getting out of a cycle of when there's a retirement or a resignation, just automatically posting, that we're looking at all the things that are available to us through staffing and making decisions. One thing that is critically different in education today is there is a national shortage for educators. They started collecting data back in 2014. It started to show in Rarid's Ugly Head in 2016, where they were showing us that about 240,000 fewer people were choosing education, and at the same rate, people were leaving. That data has only gotten worse since 2016. So when we talk about staffing and when we talk about education, we need to know that the people that are here are really important, that we nurture and take care of them, and make sure that they are in good condition and supported so that they can do the best work possible for children. That's what we do. And so when we look at the whole process, I'm gonna talk quickly about master scheduling and staffing, what we do to identify vacancy, and then I'm gonna quickly go through the process and then talk about the importance on onboarding, retention, and then eventually, I'd like to get an exit survey in place that is both online or in person, or both, so that we have continuous improvement, and we hear from our staff members and learn so we can move forward. So one of the things that just came, and, and I've worked with lots of people using this formula, is you have to look at your staffing and master scheduling before you put up a vacancy, so that we're working, I know it's near to Brad and of course Miranda's, that we're working within the budget, and not just hiring for the sake of hiring, and making sure that we're using all of our resources that we have. So we have to look at staffing, master scheduling, which is a beast, and our finances before we post for any vacancy. We have to make sure that we are working as a team. We have to make tough decisions. We can't make assumptions, even though sometimes we have to, especially during the summer months. We have to have an alignment to processes and procedures and support our desired outcomes. Our leaders, our leadership is paramount. Our teamwork is powerful and empower, empowering. And we need to include our staff in all the buildings. It can't just be a decision made at the district level or at the leadership level. We have to be having conversations with our staff. We need to model a message, what we want to see. We're making million-dollar decisions, and so we need to make sure we get that right. And now more than ever, we are competing with other districts. And now more than ever, hiring is a year-round process. We used to have a season of hiring in education. We occasionally would have an early retirement in January, but now it is a year-round operation. When we're looking at staffing variables, there's a lot that goes into this. There's certification and endorsements. We have to look at our There's certification and endorsements, we have to look at our retirements, resignations, leave of absences, who's going out, who's coming back, transfers, layoff recalls, non-renewals, promotions, contract language, and we need to look at assignments. So those are just the variables that come into play when we are looking at our staffing. And when our staffing is turning over or there's a reduction, as there is nationwide, it becomes very difficult. We look at master scheduling, these are all the different things that go into master scheduling. It's all a numbers game, but the important thing is that we need to make sure students are getting what they need at every level from pre-K-12 and beyond. And so there is electives, there's the Michigan American Curriculum, there's core, there's special populations, there's certifications, there's everything that comes into play here. But then we have to also look at trends. And you saw with the audit, we look at trends, same thing with master scheduling and staffing. We want to look at enrollment trends over three years, we want to look at class selections, we look at early childhood numbers coming in, graduation rates going out, and we have to have clear expectations with our principals and directors on how we are master scheduling. This is a concerted effort. Emails will be going out this week to all. I know it's only November and the dust is only settling for this year, but really, we start master scheduling this month. We start looking at getting things ready and prepared for kids so they start actually class selection as early as February, so that we can identify how many staff members we need so that we can make decisions and get hiring done in the spring is the goal. There's lots of hiring variables, as I just mentioned, but we have a great career tech, we have, we have our teaching and learning department that this is all centered around, we have to follow Michigan Department of Education, we have special education, we want to nurture our diversity, equity, inclusion work, English language learners, we have community ed, and we have all the opportunities we provide after. So we want to make sure we're bringing the right people in that are certified and qualified to teach all of our students and continue the opportunities that Celine Area Schools provide. This is where I'm kind of going to whiz through. We basically have seven stages. This is all in Google Drive for the, for the administrators. We break it down by stage, but we really have done a lot of work in making this a systematic process throughout the entire district so that we are using the same protocols, not just for the process, but also for the expectations and qualities we have for staff in the Celine Area Schools. We use something called Power School, which is Unified Talent. It's where we post and manage everything that we have as far as the application process. We have all new forms and steps for requesting to post. And so we use, we use, we've implemented a lot of communication tools and it's an accountability process as well. You request a post, we do a deep dive and look, is this something we need to do? Is signed off by either myself or Miranda and then we get it going. And so all of this is through Informed K-12. We spend a lot of time on reflecting on our postings. Are our postings reflecting what we want in Celine Area Schools? Or is it just a list of things that we want? It, it has to be specific to what we're looking for and we have to really make sure that we are updating this every opportunity that we have. And the administrators and building principals have been really good at taking the initiative of updating a lot of these. I want to make sure that we also are reflective and working towards our DEI work in the district. I know I'm fairly new, but I do know it's important and I want to make sure I thank Anita Martinez and Wuda Verkirk. They've met with Steve and I in the summer and last spring to kind of talk about strategies and two things, well, many things, on all of our documents. Immediately, we made sure that our nondiscrimination, equal opportunity statement is on all of our hiring processes. And then no matter what our posting is, we've added a piece here that talks about our DEI work in the Celine Area Schools, looking for individuals that will live into the work that we are living into. So we've changed some things on all of the paperwork end of things. This is how our vacancies are posted. We do a lot of prescreen, you prescreen the, the, the applications, of course, and we're looking for credentials, preferred skills. We have to do a lot in education with criminal conduct and background checks, we're looking for experience, and of course, we're always looking for added value to the district. We don't want to keep hiring the same over and over again. We want people that are going to bring new ideas, experiences, push us to be better, and that can happen directly through the hiring process. This is what our screening process looks like. Our administrators do this from the building levels. One thing that will be coming soon is, oh, sorry, I got a little behind with you. Keep going, yep. Yeah, one more, yeah. So some of the things that we're doing differently also is, even though our application numbers across the country are much lower, I came into this role when we would have five hundred applicants for a part-time kindergarten teacher. And those days are gone. We'd be happy to get fifteen sometimes. So one of the things that I always want to empower our staff with and, and work on improving upon is different ways we can get information about individuals who are applying. And CHALI is one of those ways of not just looking at applications, but having our candidates do an online screener so that we can look at predictive talent. And also, we will look at what employment engagement is as far as being an advocate, belonging, and contribution. So those are things that we can collect and it's not always necessarily to weed people out. It also could be used that when we hire people in, we gain information about how we can help them. If we know where their strengths are and where they might need support, then that's information we can have to help new teachers, paraprofessionals, transportation workers, whoever comes into our district, we can help them to be better instead of just hiring and then we move on. It gives us some information on how we can lead our employees to, to improve. There's a lot around that has changed in, in, you can go back, in education in terms of proper placement. It's not as easy as it looks. It does require that we have people in, in the right place as far as their certification. Because of the shortage, the state has gotten a little bit more flexible in some areas, especially in early childhood, but it's still a tight ship that we have to, we have to monitor. We find and look and confirm using Mo-X. Any of us can be found on Mo-X. You'll find that if you took the roof off of every school, the level of education in an educational institution is amazing. You are going to see teachers with two, three certifications, administrators with two or three degrees, post-secondary. It's amazing to see what our educators have to offer to kids. But this is how we confirm that people are who they say they are. Another thing that was in the district, thank you to the previous HR Kurt Ellis, he started Spark Hire. Spark Hire is another way of doing prescreening and it's a one-way video. And there was, I think, one or two accounts in the district. In this last spring, every administrator got their own account. We ran four or five trainings with Spark Hire, so everyone got trained. And now every building is free-flowing with Spark Hire. This is kind of a time saver as well because you can send the questions out, they, the candidates will receive the video and then they have four or five prescreen questions, they videotape and send it back. And then a team of people can have and watch those interviews and with a rubric and start making decisions on who to bring to the next level face-to-face. The next, we're going into stage three, which is the panel interview. We always like to see people perform or have tasks when they're in front of us. For example, a teacher would teach. We have leaders do presentations, there's lots of different strategies. But as I said earlier, we always are looking to hire smarter, brighter, faster, fitter people. We want to grow too, and when you bring good people in and attract good people, that only helps us get stronger and better as educators. So we do panel interviews. Sometimes there's eighteen people sitting on the panel, depending on the position. A district-level position often has a lot of stakeholders at that panel interview, but it's very organized. You can switch. We have all kinds of things and tools in place to keep that organized. We have a confidentiality agreement that we have all the folks on the panel sign. You can go to next. With our interview questions, we work really hard on the specific position. It's not just going to be a set of questions forwarded to the next, to the next. It's specific to the position, it's relationship building, it's looking for required skills, it's going to demonstrate DEI, we're looking for character, reliability, demonstrated ability, fit for the specific need of the district, and what is your added value? When I say I believe this is one of the most important things we can do, I truly mean that because every individual we hire is connected, touching, in the sense of teaching children. And it does not matter what our role is. All of our roles impact kids. And so this is why we have put so much in to elevate how we hire and what we're looking for. The next, the next step is making recommendations. We require reference checks, the old-fashioned calling people up and doing reference checks and talking to people before. We also have to do a very in-depth, as I said, conduct, criminal conduct, background check, fingerprinting, something called a PA 189 that goes to the previous district to see if there is any misconduct at the district level. These are just forms, live links that you guys had an opportunity to look into. Here are some of the forms that we universally are using. And then once a recommendation is made, it comes to HR and I'm the person that calls every candidate that is recommended and talk them through the next stages and the next steps. Shout out to the Department of Human Resources, they're amazing. In the, in the Fast and Furious, we were able to get seventy-six people hired between, I think, June and this fall, like October, seventy-six. And that's teamwork, that's amazing administrators, that's leaders in the departments that are following a process, they know where to start, they know how to finish, they know how to make sure they're checking on it. And then I have the honor of talking with all of them and our department puts all those things in motion and a lot of the onboarding part is online, which makes it easy. I believe it's really important to make sure we're communicating and building our circle of folks. So when someone doesn't get hired, we're very careful about making sure we communicate and reach out to them and let them know where they, where they stand. And every way, every step along that I just explained, there is communication and making sure people are updated where we are in the process, so we're not leaving people out there unanswered. Part of this whole process, hiring again, is in, in the middle of this sandwich. A really important part of this process is onboarding people so that they are set up for success. And I don't, I might sound like I'm exaggerating, but it's important to roll out the red carpet for our new employees and give them the red carpet treatment. And one of the orientation days this summer had everybody that needed to be part of it connected. So we had Jackie here working and having the interviews done for our opening day. We had technology here, so everyone that was hired walked away with their laptop or their information and they could log on. We had all of HR in here working. Everybody had a hand in this so that, and every administrator showed up to be introduced to the new staff. I think in this session, we had forty-two people from all of our different career, careers in the district. Some of the things that we really work hard on is all inclusiveness. We didn't have separate orientations, we brought all the departments together. We also have built some things and put in place so that no matter where you are in your career, you can access the things called staff links and whom to ask. It's really about taking big and making it small so that you're able to navigate your new job swiftly and, and get answers or answers to your questions. So new to, you can switch, new to some of our intentional ways of retaining people is transparency. So the administration worked really hard to get staff links. It's under for staff and it is anything and everything you need as an employee to operate. We've also feathered that out to something called whom to ask. So if you have a question about a form or a process, you can find what department, who it is, what their, what the link is to the form, who to ask, their phone number. We really wanted to make sure that people are successful and can navigate. It's not easy being the new kid on the block, I said that today in negotiations. It's not easy being the new kid on the block and there's lots to learn. It's a fire hose when you come into a new organization. And so this was made to, to simplify it and give people access to what they need. The other thing that we did for all the groups, and it helps in the hiring and retention part, is create individual calendars for everyone so that no matter what your position is, you know what your calendar is and it's posted on staff links. This is just one example of many things that, that we've added. And then, this is such an amazing opportunity to be an educator and I want to just encourage people to remember that there is a teacher shortage and I need to say it's an education shortage. I, I, I'm very passionate about this. It's important to know that in two thousand nineteen, twenty, there were fifty-eight education positions on the critical shortage list in Michigan. Most of them were federal shortages, meaning everyone in the country were having shortages. Right around twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, they dropped the critical shortage list because every position is considered critical shortage. So if you go to the MDE, the Michigan Department of Education, you'll see that that list is gone and there's lots of strategies that we're trying to do to improve and attract and maintain and retain. Some of the challenges that we have, you'll see that teacher vacancies jumped by fifty-one percent in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. High poverty areas have four times fewer applicants than other areas. It's difficult to hire diverse certified teachers. In Michigan, ninety percent are white, seven percent of our teaching and education personnel are black, one percent Hispanic, and less than one percent Asian in the state of Michigan. Seventy-four percent of our Michigan teachers are women and twenty-six percent men. And Michigan retained around seventy-three percent white teachers and fifty-nine percent of our black teachers. In addition to employees leaving the profession, fewer and fewer going into education as a career path, and only four percent of the college degrees in two thousand nineteen, twenty were young folks going in and choosing education as their career. Four percent. So we have some national challenges, some state challenges. I lift this data because I know how important it is for kids to see staff in front of them that look like them. That is not lost on anyone in this room, on the board, your administrators, but we statistically have to do something different from the point of entry. And I mean, seriously, need to start talking to elementary kids about becoming educators and making it look and feel welcoming. The exit surveys are in motion, I talked about that a little bit and I hope to get that up and running. And then this, most importantly, next slide, is this is what we're here for. Kids are counting on us, they're counting on us to do the right thing and they're counting on us to get the right people in front of them. Thank you.
Thank you, we may have a question or two.
I have a question.
Yes.
So thank you for the presentation. One question I have is, there was a lot about the piece of applications. the piece of applications, but what I didn't hear much about is how we sought applications. So I'm just wondering if, in reference to your last point, well, first of all, I think it's actually maybe even more important for kids to have teachers who look different from them in our district.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, not just the same.
Yeah.
Just to be exposed to people with different ideas and different backgrounds. So I know when I've asked this question before about like, well, where are we recruiting? It's often that we're recruiting from eastern or we're recruiting very locally. And I'm just wondering what efforts the district is making if Michigan has, you know, sort of challenges, and I'm guessing they're nationwide. What efforts are we making to recruit sort of in non-traditional places to try to bring people in? I realize that it's hard to move on a teacher's salary, but we do have a like major university nearby that brings in people from all over the world. And I just don't understand why, or maybe we are. I'm just curious as to what efforts we're making to recruit more globally. Are we going to colleges out of the state? Are we sending materials? Are we hosting student teachers from outside of this county? Because I really appreciate all my kids' teachers adore them, actually, but so many of them are from Washtenaw County or Wayne County. And I just, that makes me a little sad. I got to be honest with you. I mean, I like their teachers, but I feel like they could have benefited from a broader experience.
It's a great question. In the time that I've been here, the first step was to get a process in place. And part of that, in the opportunity to talk with Wuder and Anita, we talked about some of that global reach. The frustrating thing is the national data is not that much different from Michigan data. And people like to or will go towards places that they're comfortable with. That's why you see that Washtenaw County. Talent, the power school talent ed that we use is a platform that pushes stuff out all over. And when you have jobs that are up all year long and you get two or three applicants, that is that national reach that is really difficult. Really, the crooks of it, the bottom line is people are not going into the profession. So it's hard to reach far and financially spend money. There's a national job fair right now or coming up in Louisiana. And I just don't think it's worth spending the district's money for myself or someone to go to a team because it hasn't changed enough. I've gone to the job fairs for years. I've gone on, they've tried, the universities have tried online job fairs. I've gone out of state to job fairs. And it's the same, the problem really is, and your question's great, Lauren, the problem really is, is we have to replenish our desire for, interest for people to go into this career.
Just one follow-up. When we get interviewees, and I hear that we're using panels, are we kind of double-checking ourselves that we're not having like sort of a hometown bias or a, like, you know, our own biases in hiring? Is that something where, like, when we get the panel, are we being intentional about not necessarily having, you know, insulated kind of hiring thoughts?
So that's a great question. That's one of the reasons why I am working to get CHALI in place because it's never a perfect science number-wise. But if you, when you have a very prescribed process and people have or know someone that say, hey, I have a friend or whoever, and I want to have them apply, great. They have to apply online and go through the process. And as you get more people that turn over, like, I don't like the turnover, believe me, but you get different views and to your point, getting people outside of Washtenaw County helps to bring in that next generation of people to come through. It is so hard and tricky. But when you have a process and there are expectations in that process and everybody is following the process, then it helps in that piece that you're talking about that we're just not hiring our friends and family, so to speak. Not that that's always happening, but...
If I could also add, Lauren, I work with about two hundred and fifty of these new teachers every year. And to get them to find a job thirty miles away from where their home is is like asking them to go to Timbuktu. They're just, they're so homebound. And I feel the sadness as well because teaching can be a great adventure. I've taught in schools two thousand miles apart. Brad?
One thing that I'd like to just ask, so first of all, I want to say you do a great job. So thank you for the processes you've done. Thank you for the transparency and some of the things you share with us with regards to the negotiations process and some of those updates and things. I think that communication and that transparency has been really welcome. So I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
One thing that I notice, okay, and this could like piggyback on kind of what Lauren's saying here, is there's a consortium of Washtenaw area schools, okay? And so that's like Ann Arbor, Chelsea, Dexter, Ypsilanti, Whitmore Lake. And so they all list their positions in one place. We don't. We use our own like frontline Ted dot K twelve thing, and our positions don't show up. And so when somebody's looking to be more global, if you will, about positions, right, and they don't, let's say they live in Wayne County or they live up north, I just think maybe we might be too hard to find at times.
We're on, if you go to the W I S D., you should be able to see Celine on there.
I just looked to see like a list of like all the vacancies and schools that are on, and like, there's all kinds of schools, but not any from Celine.
So if you, and we've talked about this before, so I'll check again for you, Brad, but we've looked at different search engines or tools.
Yeah.
I don't know the full history of why it's not fully completed or included in that, but it's very costly and the timing has to be right to pull that down, get it up and get everyone trained. So this is something that I've been diving into as well. But you should, we are, and I'll, when I sit down, I'll look it up for you, but we are and should be face available to find on the Washtenaw in the Miners School District. We'll look.
I'm on it right now.
But I've asked the same thing, and it is expensive and it is timely.
I follow that.
Yeah. That's the biggest challenge. So it's kind of like, where do we start? And then, how do we continue? And these, both your questions, Lauren, questions are great questions. But I'll look again for you. Yeah. Thanks for the question, though. I got you.
Got a quick one from Jenny, maybe others?
I wondered if you could talk to us, one of the things that, along with the teacher shortage and the continuing, I guess, deficit of applicants in the teacher programs, I just wonder if, I know in other districts in our county, they've had to resort to emergency certification. And do we have a plan in place should we get to that point?
We have used different strategies to get people on board. And then sometimes, unfortunately, they'll work as a long-term sub, or then we'll hold them. And once they get their certification, we'll have a timeline and even do a little back pay once they get their certification. There's a lot of alternative programming out there that can be used. But we are very resourceful in working with people. I mean, recently sat in and made sure that I helped a young lady get her license and do an online test and sat with her. Like, so we're willing to go the length to make it as easy as possible or recruit the best we can. The special ed department does a really nice job. They work with paras in a program that work towards their certification to become teachers in the district. So again, it's getting people to, and it's looking every time that we're hiring, often we'll see, I'll see people that are applying that have a degree but might be applying for a job that's not classroom or let their certification expire. I will have conversations with them about, what do you think about getting your certification? We'll get you hired here, but I can help you over there. So that's why I like to have conversations too. So I'm looking at everybody and seeing where can we sort through or help them kind of elevate.
And then... I was going to say, considering the hefty agenda we have ahead of us and the fact that we're very close to needing a bio break, could I ask you to make a very quick question?
Yes. So I just had two things left. So the one, I had mentioned this before, and I don't know if it's when you were here or if Kurt was, if it was when Kurt was here, but we do have that T A. to teacher program that's happening right here in our county. And I know that the candidates who are a part of that program are at least employed in our county. And there is more diversity in that program, it appears. And so I just wonder if we've made any effort to reach out to the I S D. And I know Dr. McVeigh works with those budding teachers. But I just wonder if we've made an effort to look at recruiting through that pool of candidates. And I know we've made an effort for the T As who are currently in our district. And I appreciate the investment that we've made in them and that that is continuing on into these new roles. But I also wonder if we might be able to diversify our candidate pool by potentially talking to T As in other areas. And then lastly, I think that tonight we were introduced to Dr. Allen, who is a graduate of an H B C U. And I think that enlisting her knowledge and expertise and her familiarity with the H B C U. and H B C U.'s and hers in particular, if that might be an avenue to,
Absolutely.
you know, opening up our ideas.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I do want to just take, I mean, this will come up, I guess segue into discussion about our D E I Advisory Committee. Thank you for calling out one of our, two of our subcommittee members working on the hiring process. And, you know, I think it's a reflection of the five-year, sorry, three-year plan that the D E I Advisory Committee has worked on for the district and making the recommendation and that you are seeing that like through. I'm super thankful for that. The fact that you've updated the nondiscrimination policy to be consistent across websites is fantastic because I've been talking about that since before I was elected in two thousand eighteen, contacting the district and being like, oh, this isn't consistent, right? And I've noticed some of those changes, like with your name being listed and things like that. So I appreciate those changes, like really appreciate it. So with a couple of questions with the D E I, are you doing like any sort of bias training for when there are staff doing the search?
So there, yeah, that is something that in our committee meetings, we talked about getting, I have some videos. I feel like they need to be updated. So looking at different resources and bringing that in is something that is on our, more than on our radar, something that we want to implement for sure. There's the gathering of getting stuff in place and then getting it up and working, and then the refinement of it, of reflecting and saying, seeing what's working, what's not, and what needs to get better. That's an area that we will continue training on. And if you have any good videos that you can recommend, I would love to take a look at them.
Yeah, thanks. And I bet our D E I Advisory Committee has some good resources.
Specific to hiring.
Yes.
Yes, that would be great.
Yeah.
I would love to take a look at them.
Yeah, awesome. And then, real quick, I have a question about, so recently we posted, or the administration posted, the Director of Safety and Security. And so I'm curious about like the process with position, creating position and stuff. I know that's something that didn't really come to the board. And I know it's a district level position. So I'm just curious how that came about. And I don't know if that's one of the first new positions you all have created, but if you kind of go through that process.
Well, I mean, that is something that came from the district level. And from an H R perspective, I work with Steve to get what a posting would look like. I know that one of our former administrators did a lot of research in other districts to see what that position would look like. A lot of research and shared it. A group of us came up with what we thought would be very important for the district as far as a director. The hard thing about education is we are asked and given things to do that aren't, and there's not the dedicated time at the level of seriousness that this position is. So when you have people, kind of like when I was a principal, I did not like the thought of a athletic director also being an assistant principal. The two just, it's too much. It's too much to oversee. This was a position that could be dedicated just to this. I'm glad to say that we have, I think, thirty-three applications, really good applications, and sixteen of them got a Spark Hire invitation today. So we're very organized and well on our way with hiring that. But it can come from all different need is the big thing. What is the need of the district and how can it benefit the district and everyone that is in the district? And that is a touch point that that position will have an immediate impact on everyone in the district.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank, go ahead.
Thank you for the great presentation. I'm going to be super fast because I know we have a big agenda. It was a large deck. Thank you. Really like the idea of exit surveys. So thank you for including those.
Sure.
I had a question about foreign language specifically. I know we have a teacher shortage. I could say a whole lot about the problem that we have with the perception of the profession in our country and lack of respect and value and compensation for these individuals. But I'll digress. I would love to know what we're doing as a district around hiring for foreign language because I do feel it's so important to be aligned with our compass as we set these kids out into the world, wherever they may happen to go, into service, into trade, into college, to have that global mindset and having those skills to communicate and connect with people cross-culturally, I think is so important. But I also know it's a very hard position to fill. So can you give us a little bit of an update on that?
There hasn't. We've hired a teacher, someone that also helps coordinate with our E L. students in programming recently, and she is amazing. But I haven't had an opportunity, and I know Kara and I talk frequently about the increase in student populations and how the need is changing. I haven't personally had a lot of time to dive into that other than us hiring this fabulous new teacher. But it is something that I understand greatly. I used to go to the U of M Job Fair, and I would see people that went and taught in Japan. They can speak it fluently, but they didn't have the certification. So I would pluck them out of that, have a private meeting, tell them to get the certification. So I understand the question. But here, I haven't had a lot of time to dive into it. So maybe this is a to-be-continued. And Kara can probably speak to it greater than myself as well.
Thank you. Just putting the plug in there.
Yeah, I love it.
For foreign language and support.
Yep. It's critical. Thank you.
Well, assuming there are no more questions from the board, I thank you very much, Kara.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What a great addition you've been to our staff. And with that objection, I'd like to ask for a ten-minute recess for leg stretching and hydration. And we'll keep it at that. I hear no objections. So, see, and I don't know, I can't see that far. About nine oh five. Thank you. About nine oh five. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for your indulgence at our, our brief recess. Uh, we have a, several items, A through G on the, uh, action items, and we have some discussion items. And we're going to start, we can just dive right in. Um, first of all, we, we need to begin with, uh, we, an action item. There's a recommended motion to, and I hope I got the language right, to direct the Board of Education to conduct an independent third-party review of the Athletic Department. Do we have a mover?
Some move.
Tim Austin, followed by.
Support.
Jay Steben. Uh, now we'd like to engage in a discussion, but since this is primary, I, I, I'd like to offer two things. I have a proposed, uh, a motion or a proposed pathway forward, but I'd like to invite Dr. Lott to respond, which he was not able to do the first time.
Can I just point of order with, um, point of order with the closed session component?
Well, what is your question?
I thought trustee, um, treasure Gerby was. Oh, I thought, okay.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, there wasn't, yeah, we stopped working on that at some point. So, right. Thank you for reminding us of that. So at this point, we carved our agenda into stone and we're moving ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, I do want to, uh, point out a number of points in support of our Athletic Department. And I do not feel at all that a third-party independent review is warranted. We already have an eighteen-year retired, well-respected former athletic director providing mentorship for the Athletic Department and is reporting back to me on a regular basis and giving me reports about process and procedures.
Excuse me a second, audience. Steve, audience, I understand, I understand that you're, have passions about this, but shouting out comments and making comments from the back is not helpful at all to this and is disruptive to the proceedings. So we listen to you, we listen to Steve, we listen to everybody at the table. Thank you. I'm not going to entertain that at this point from anyone.
At any rate, I'm getting regular reports from a mentor who, the latest report was excellent processes and procedures within the Athletic Department, many of which I would use if I wasn't retired. Further is offering areas of growth and providing those support areas for the Athletic Department. Now, a third-party independent review does send a message that our Athletic Department has committed some gross misconduct, which is not the case. And I truly do not support it. Now, I can also answer and report out to the Board of Education with any and all questions regarding any of our athletic teams. And then if needed or, um, desired, we can report that out to the public in a way that is not violating FERPA or anything in that regard. And I am not stating that our Athletic Department cannot improve. But I believe it was trustee Gerby who said that can also happen in the normal process of the cycle of improvement and professional development, which is happening now. Again, I fully support our Athletic Department. They're doing a very good job. And then the other element that I am concerned about, people are talking about accountability, my accountability. Another way to address that is for my evaluation on November ni- eighteenth. I've already identified six areas, which I will share with you that you could say, well, if you feel like I'm not doing the job effectively in relation to this particular issue, you could state that you're holding me accountable in that regard. So again, I do not support in any capacity an independent review.
All right. Thank you. Uh, go ahead. I'll.
Okay.
I, just a, just a point, just before we get started. I know we were a little agitated at the beginning, Tim and I, you've, you've, we and I've had some conversations, but I'm going to ask that, I'm going to try to be as unbiased and neutral on all this as I possibly can as board president. So going forward to this discussion. So, Tim, you're up.
So this would be a holistic review of the entire Athletic Department, not just one person, not just one team. And I think it's great that, uh, we've hired a mentor. Uh, that is completely in Steve's realm to do and that, I think that's great that he did this. That does not negate, uh, independent third-party review though, because in the, in the end, this isn't reviewing whoever, this isn't reviewing the mentor or the person being mentored. This is reviewing all processes. And, um, this isn't abnormal. You know, in two thousand and eighteen, we had the Huckabee Report. That was an independent outside review of our entire district and the culture and all that. Um, two thousand and four, we had an independent third-party review of the Athletic Department. That was a Beekman Report. So these aren't something new and I don't think it's something that we need to look at as it's something Steve did wrong or something the Athletic Department did wrong, because I propose that we do a, um, like a firm that would do this would be, one, independent and two, um, it would be, it would not be a law firm. I wouldn't want a law firm. I mean, if we're going to use a lawyer to do this, it could be used for attorney-client privilege. I want something that is going to be, uh, foible. It's going to be, um, it's not going to be, it's going to be transparent. And, um, so using a firm that does that, um, then, then it's for our community. And I know there's conversation about the dollars and cents. And it's important that we are, um, cognizant of the dollars being spent, but the community supports the school and the school gets their funding from parents bringing their children to Celine. So at some point, when, when all this is going on, we have to be like, okay, we can spend some dollars to do this. Because I think it's ultimately important. And if, if we have the report done and they find everything out and they can give us, uh, suggestions, uh, you know, what we can do better, this is a learning curve. This is, this is, this will make us better going forward. This is not. And, and, and I'm, I'm frustrated that, that we want to drill this down to, it's a, we're, we're after a single person because that's not what this is about.
Well, we could just ask if there's anyone has anything more to add, response either to Steve's comment or to the motion on the table. Or I could, uh, put forth a motion that I've been scribbling away at. List of questions. Excellent.
I don't know that the board, uh, will have answers for this, but, um, I guess my first question, I hear, uh, people in the audience. Part of me does not really understand why hiring an outside person who has expertise in the Athletic Department is not considered an independent review or third-party review, because it seems like to me, I'm not, I'm not a reviewer, but I'm a fairly educated person. A third party is someone outside the district, which this person is, who is an expert in the s- subject matter. The only thing that you could argue wasn't, uh, the only thing that you are, could argue wasn't independent is that this person is reporting back to the superintendent and not to us directly. So I guess that could be something that we could talk about. Um, so that's one question I have. I'm just going to put my questions out there and then if people have responses. Why this for extra review dollars versus a myriad of other district issues? I hear our football players are upset. I know this was difficult. I hear that there's concerns with lacrosse, but I've also heard about swastikas and, uh, LGBTQ kids getting bullied and there are so many issues. And there are so many issues that have, like, been, I think, quite actionable that we work through the process on. And I'm just not... I just do not entirely understand as... Whether or not this should be... whether this rises to the level of an independent review. I'm not... I really have been, like, agonizing over this and hearing from various people for a while. And so, I'm not saying I am not willing to contemplate it, but I'd like to hear other people's thoughts as to why. Because I have not, in my time here as a parent or in the district before this year, heard, like, repeated difficulties about that particular thing. So, that's that. I would like to know, I only... I'm sorry that I am not aware of these prior third-party reviews that trustee Austin mentioned, but I'm not. And so, I guess I'd like to know what came of them, because if we had a 2018 review of district culture, and we still have some of the things that I've seen in our culture, was it useful? Was it a good... was it a good... Does anyone have any evidence that it actually changed or helped anything? And if not, then why do we think doing it this one would be better?
Were those your questions?
I'm not... I'm not aware of that report.
Which one, Huckabee?
I mean, I came in in 2000, early 2019.
I think I have a copy of the Huckabee Report at home, and I'm... There are still a couple of paragraphs in it that stand out to me as unresolved issues, but it's been a long time. I will try to get you a copy of the Huckabee Report, if that's available. Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Jennifer Steben.
So, I had a few things I wanted to say that I wrote down, but I wanted to respond a little bit to Lauren first. And I think we can respond more as we kind of have the discussion, because I don't have all the answers that you're looking for. I think the difference, and to Susan's point, we came in at the same point, so I don't have a copy of that report either. I just knew existed. I think one of the differences to me is that it would be... Hate to use the word accountable tonight, because it's been used a few times, but I think it's a good word to use, that if we get a report and we have continuous improvement items, let's, as a Board, take it on to, like, follow up and make sure that we're doing the things that were suggested as areas for improvement. And one of the things is on our agenda tonight that I think... I kind of related a little bit. We take legal advice, right? And then, it's up to us if we follow up on that. And that's kind of the reason that the DEIAC is on the agenda tonight. And so, I think with a review, it would be up to us to make sure that we continually follow up on it. With regards to the mentorship, I think mentorship is great. I love it. I think it's yes and. I don't see it as a replacement. I do see it as not completely independent, considering who it is, who is a wonderful stand-up person. I am absolutely sure and very decorated from MHSAA. I'm all for it. And, you know, it's not up to me, because he's not my employee, because I'm on the Board of Education. So, if Steve thinks that that is a good path, I support Steve in that decision. So, I think it's... I think it's yes and. I think your other question about why that... this topic, I think that's hard, right? I think it hits... I think many things rise to the level of us needing to be accountable and have action. And I hear what you're saying. This particular team is tied to some of those other events for me a little bit, so...
I mean, I didn't see anywhere in that list of questions, like, whether or not there's an investigation of why one teammate would racially harass another teammate.
Yeah. And without getting into... So, I kind of see it as part of... and I don't want to tie it just to that team. I think it's athletics. Like, when things occur like that, is there an alignment between the processes within the district and within the Athletic Department? Because one of the things that we already have a motion for is the alignment between eligibility and enrollment. We've already identified that that's something that the Board would like looked at. Perhaps anti-harassment and bullying is a component of this as well. So, I just wanted to address your questions, because you put it out there. So, that's kind of my response to you. I didn't want to leave you hanging, because sometimes we forget to answer questions from each other. I did want to say a few things that I wrote down, so I wouldn't forget them. The first thing I wanted to say is sitting in a seat means that we have to make really difficult decisions that are not always popular. And I take that on. We are never going to have a decision that absolutely everybody agrees with, not at the stable or not in the public. And it's hard to do. So, I appreciate that we're at least having the conversation. For me, a review is not about individuals. It is about the whole. It is about continuous improvement to support staff and to support students and to discuss all sorts of things. We talked about enrollment and eligibility alignment. Spending five years on the finance team, I'm interested in the cash flow. I'm interested in all sorts of things. I want to look at everything holistically. We're in coaching evaluations right now. That's a component. Like, I'm not parsing things out. I think eligibility has been stood up so much as an example, and clearly, we don't want what happened repeated. But I like the idea of, like, if we're going to do this, let's do it right, and let's look at everything. Because if we are number one in the state for athletics, then we need to operate like the number-one school district for athletics, and it's the right thing to do. And again, I do appreciate the assistance from someone who is... Has been really highly regarded by MHSAA. So, I see it as a parallel path a little bit. So, those were my thoughts.
Do we have any other comments before?
So, if we're the number-one school in the state in athletics, are you worried we're going to slip based on that? Because presumably, that's because we're doing a pretty good job in the Athletic Department?
No, I think, for me, it's just we're very visible having that type of ranking, and I'm proud of it. I think that... I think our student athletes and our coaching staff and our Athletic Department work very hard. But if we are that high, I mean, we should always be, whether... Whether, what division or what ranking, we should always be operating legally, ethically, doing everything the right way. But I think when you are on the top, you really, really have to get it right. It's just incredibly important, because usually, those are larger programs. And usually, those are, quite honestly, a larger line item on our budget. So... That's... So, I don't necessarily think it's tied to a decrease in ranking. I think it just... it continually comes up. We are... This is one of the things that we're known for, and we need to get it right.
So, I... I will state again, so first of all, I did a little research into the Beekman Report. And the headline of the article from 2004 is "Beekman Report: Critical of Celine Athletic Director." And I don't want to get more into that, but like, I have some reservation. Like, this is core to me. Like, I just have to say that. Like, this is core to who I am as a teacher, as an educator. And I believe that we've... we're hiring Mr. Welton to be a mentor. I think Teresa Steger is her primary administrator. I think Teresa Steger should have the ability to go through an improvement process with her. I think she should have the ability to put her on an IDP and on a...
She's not...
Your primary, okay, so...
Oh, I thought that was the business...
So, then Steve is her primary evaluator. I think we should have the ability to go through the process that is in place that educators go through. This is just... This is something I do. You know, if we had a chemistry teacher, I think of it like this. If I was a... I am a chemistry teacher, and I gave a test, and all my students just did awful, right? I mean, just terribly awful, horrible, right? And now, all their grades are, like, viciously impacted. And now, they're all worried about, are they going to get into XYZ school? Like, would we want to then have an independent review of, like, my chemistry program? And like, what I'm doing as a teacher? Like, my point is like... And I'm just using myself as an example, but my point is like, I... Like, I just need people to know, I believe in the processes that are in place for educators to get better at what we do. And so, for me, this runs contrary to that, right? This runs where we're not allowing Teresa, or Steve, and we're not allowing Wayne Welton, and we're not allowing them to go through these valid conversations for improvement. Because if we go through an improvement process, right? I'm concerned about, like, the message this does send to our Athletic Department. And I am worried that it would send a message to our other educators in our district who say, "Well, wait a minute. Like, if things happen to them, then why couldn't that happen to me?" And for me, like, that gives me drastic pause as a person who works in a school building. And that's all I have to say about that. It really, really gives me a lot of pause.
Jenny Miller.
So, just thinking about just the time that I have served on the Board here these last four years, I have history in the district, obviously, before that. But thinking about the processes that are in place, we do have processes in place. Those processes were not in place when the Beekman Report happened. The new evaluation system started in 2011. And so, that's when those processes began. Not that there wasn't evaluation before, but the evaluation process now is more on the continuous improvement and development of staff. And so, thinking about the IDP or Continuous Improvement Plan or Areas for Growth, first of all, in education, as educators, we believe that there's always room for growth and improvement, and that's why we have the systems that we have. And so, when I'm thinking about the processes that we have in place and in the conversations that I've had with Steve regarding these issues, he has met with the parties involved. He has met with Carol Digglio in HR, and he has developed a plan for improvement. And what I believe is that I have asked him, please, if he could share in a way that doesn't violate FERPA for students or for our employees to kind of outline the areas of growth and areas for improvement. And in this process, what happens is that if the plan is presented to the employee and the employee decides to work that plan, that person is then followed up on more frequently than just a regular annual evaluation. They're assigned a mentor. They have regular meetings with their evaluator to measure their growth against the plan. So, there's two things that can happen. The employee can say, "I'm not interested in this plan," and then the relationship is severed. Or, the employee can say, you know, "I agree with the plan," or "I believe in the plan, and we're going to work the plan and move forward." And I personally believe that this is the process that's in place. This is the process that is in contracts. This is the process that is mandated by the state legally. If the plan does not satisfy us, then I think we move to a review. But with this plan in place and with areas for growth and improvement, I think we have to give the district a chance, the employees a chance, to work the plan. I also just wanted to point out that we are known for athletics. We're known for a lot of other things also. And when you're saying that by having a third-party review, that would make us number one in athletics, or that would embolden... Well, that would embolden our... That would... That would... Well, you indicated that by doing the right thing...
That's absolutely not what I said.
Well, by doing... You...
She's saying our district has standards.
That's correct. We are currently ranked number one.
And we are... And we are following the measures in place to improve upon and around those standards. By inviting a third-party, at this point, we are not giving the processes opportunity. And I... To be quite honest with you, I cannot believe that a union representative has not become involved in this. I think that this is grievable. I also believe that by moving forward, not only is this a vote of no confidence to the Athletic Department and the Athletic Director, but it is to our superintendent. And I think that that is opening us up to a lot of negativity moving forward in terms of who might want to associate with us. And then, lastly, what I'll say is that I want to use two examples for how this process works. And I think that these are public, so I can say this. But we had a lot of parents coming to us and complaining about a situation in volleyball. And the plan was put in place. The plan was put in action. And the people who were involved were able to make decisions, and changes occurred. The same thing recently happened with lacrosse. In fact, just this week, if anybody has followed up and gotten updates. The process works. The process is there for a reason. And I think until we see that the process is not moving forward or has failed, I think that we are... We are jumping... We are jumping to... We're jumping too far ahead. I'm not saying that in the future, if things disintegrate or if things do not show an act of improvement, that we couldn't return to this. But I think that by not giving an opportunity for these plans to show growth and show areas of improvement, we're doing a disservice to our evaluation system. And as Brad said, as somebody who works in public education and is evaluated on the same evaluation as every other educator in the state, this is... This is going to create... And it already has. I've gotten several phone calls. It's creating concern with our staff.
So, I'm hearing a lot about how this is affecting, like, continuous improvement plans and all that, but this isn't directed towards one person. And so, yes, I think, like I said, I think the mentor is a great idea. And I'm not saying you get rid of the mentor. I think you can keep the mentor. You can continue to do whatever Steve feels fit to do with his staff. That's fine. This is completely independent of it. And it's looking at all aspects of it, not looking at just a staff member. That's not what this is about. And it doesn't have to be about that. If we have people that want to make that the charge, and that's what we're doing, well, you're making that the charge. That's not what this review is actually supposed to do. So, that and... Now, I lost my train of thought. But that, you know, that... I keep hearing that. It keeps going back to that, and that's not what this is all about. So, I think we're kind of losing our focus here. I think also, if you were to... The number of complaints, the number of issues you hear of any department, it could be a different department, but in the business life, you don't just disregard it. You do something about it, and you would maybe have... You would have a review. But with a... They're hired a mentor. But this, again, this is working with one person. I want a review of the whole department with all of the sports teams as well, down to everything. So, it's much bigger than that.
Do you want to reply to...
Just, I'm not... What I want to say, first of all, is that I understand that a review would be of the entire Athletic Department. As Brad read from the Beekman Report, and as I read from the Beekman Report today, it did center largely around the Athletic Director. And what I want to say is that in that case, and also in this case, both Athletic Directors acted with integrity. And whether people want to believe that or not, they did. They found out something, and they reported it in a way that allowed for transparency and allowed for fairness across the state.
And I wasn't around for the 2004 report, so I don't know what was going on entirely with the district. What I do know is what is going on with the district today.
Well, what I would say since I started... Sorry, may I please, because I started this. May I please...
Sure, and Susan, and Brad, then Susan.
I respect the quorum, and if you don't want me to...
All right, well, I didn't know if you were cutting off Susan, or Susan's hand was up. Your next, Brad.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So, I've been on for six years, and I did a quick... So I've been on for six years, and I did a quick Google search, because I, all these sports things were coming up, and I think trustee Miller touched on them. There's been issues with volleyball 2022, baseball 2023, field hockey, I believe, was 2022 as well. And so this is, well, and obviously the lacrosse, football, I'm sure there's more in there since 2022. And so I think, you know, the Wayne Welton, I believe the name is, was brought in, I believe, in reaction to, like, that there was cause for an independent review, and then that's when the superintendent brought him in to identify and support areas that can be improved. I think that's totally separate from an independent review. And, you know, I think if we're going to be transparent, accountable, we should be comfortable letting this happen.
I'm not uncomfortable, I just think there's process.
No, I'm not, I'm saying in general, I'm talking.
So just, I just want to say, for the record, I am not going to succumb to a mob mentality. You can yell at me, you can say what you want, you can post on social media. I am going to act with integrity, and I'm going to serve in a way that is dictated by law for the Board of Education. And if we continue to get yelled at, I'm going to ask for a recess, because the decorum that is happening in this room is unfair.
I was talking about the superintendent.
I'm not talking about you.
Okay. So I do believe there is a, because of what we're witnessing, there is totally a conflict of interest for the superintendent to be involved in this. And so I know Lauren brought up the idea of ad hoc, and I thought that was, because I know there was a whole other thing that legal was supposed to investigate, and it sounds like maybe we're getting an update that involved specifics of the academic department and processes dealing with a specific, huh?
You said academic.
Athletic, yes, I'm thinking A D, yeah. So, so, yeah. You know, we haven't talked to legal about that component. It sounded like it was more working with the superintendent and the board president. So I want to make sure that we are, when we say third-party, we are doing that, and they take the reins and do it.
Brad?
So I want to say, I guess I have a couple of thoughts now. Number one, I'm not opposed to having us do an independent review of the athletic department. I'm not opposed to having us do any type of independent review if the processes that we have in place give us substandard answers. But we haven't even given ourselves a chance to get them, or to go through the entirety of the improvement process. And so for me, this is just simply too soon for that. So that's where I just kind of lie, and, you know, and coming from a guy who loves athletics, like, you know, I, I've said my piece.
Okay. Hearing no more, depending on how this vote goes, I have a supplemental thing to add to this, I think we're ready to put it to a vote. So I'll make sure I got this right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I got Tim, Susan, three, four? All right, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we got three. So here's my supplemental, if you don't mind. Tim, I heard, I heard what you said, I heard everything. I also heard a lot about steps and processes. So I think there's a, I think there are so many moving parts if we're going to go down this road, there are so many moving parts if we're going to do it right. I'm going to recommend this. Here's my motion, to direct the board president to create an ad hoc committee to research, and I may have the language wrong, the parameters for engaging an independent third-party to conduct a transparent review of the athletic department and present their findings by the next meeting of the board, or as early in January as possible. And what I mean is the parameters, as I said, because you don't go, you don't go looking up, athletic department reviews are us, you, we need to talk about the parameters, legal, FERPA, cost, who's going to do it, how is it going to be done so it's not disruptive, and then figure out who's the right person to do it.
I think legal, sorry.
And involve legal, of course.
Well, legal, I mean, I think we can contact them and ask for referrals, because they work specifically with K through 12. I mean, this is not unusual for these type of reviews to happen, so I think they would be able to give us resources.
Who's the we of who's going to contact that? That's what I'm saying, we need some.
The ad hoc piece.
I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Susan, thank you. You're jumping ahead a little bit, anxious to do the work probably, but you're right, one has to contact the legal and figure out that stuff. And I, do we have someone who can second what I just recommended?
No, I would like for you to read it again, because I believe. Wait, hang on one second, I'm not done talking.
All right.
I do not think that this should rest in the hands of one person. That's what we did two weeks ago. And I totally believe that we are seven, we are a team of seven, and we should be making decisions at the board table in open meeting about this, and having conversations about what to do with regards to cost, with regards to the who. I also am not a reviewer, I don't know where to start, and I would love all of us to work together. So I would not support the language as written.
The purpose, and maybe you can help me with the language, is to figure out where the edges of this problem are, and what we, what information we need to put in everybody's hands in order to make a decision about which outfit to engage. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think we can, once we start to research and find the facility, and I think MASP will probably be able to help on this too, because I'm sure they've been asked this as well. But once we find the candidates, then we can ask them what the parameters are versus us setting the parameters.
And that's when we have a discussion at the table, either, I don't know, maybe December's too fast, but, or in January to talk about what those parameters are. So this is why I mentioned the word parameter. Obviously, we're going to have a discussion, Jennifer, about the details and make our decision as to say, well, is cost really an issue, yes, no, and let's move forward with that. I'm going to read the motion again, and if there is a second, that's great, if not, it dies, to direct the board president to create an ad hoc committee, that'll be three people, to research the parameters for engaging an independent third-party to conduct a transparent review of the athletic department and present their findings by the next meeting of the board, or as early in January as possible.
I don't see, I don't see why there's, I mean, I think that's fine, we can't deliberate on email, so we just need somebody to like, a few people to narrow down a few options and come back and present them to the board, that's all I thought.
If I can add an example, a few years back, when we hired a superintendent here, his name, the successful candidate was Steve Lott, we had an ad hoc committee of Jennifer, myself, and Dennis Valenti, trustee, to, just to talk about who should we engage as a search firm, and then take that to the next steps. We brought it to the board for a quick discussion, they decided, okay, we're going with MLI as opposed to MASP, fine, and that's what I'm hoping we can do with this.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Okay, before we vote on that.
We're having the discussion now.
I like that it has timeline in it. We are in a position right now where I understand there's hurt and there's passion for this topic in the community, so I want to be cognizant of that. I want to be cognizant of the fact that I believe at least two of us are not at the December meeting. I want to be cognizant of the fact that we have two new trustees coming on in January, so they're, and, you know, they will be, obviously, one person, one voteful trustees with having no prior experience as a board trustee, and there is a learning curve, and, you know, we need to support them, especially through that first year, as our board operating procedures say. So I just want to better understand what this looks like operationally, because we're at almost the end of the year, we have people rolling off, we have people rolling on, we have two people that cannot physically be here in December, what does that look like? I guess that's my question.
The easy answer is that when we tried to get ourselves together for a review of Steve's, sorry, Dr. Lott's evaluation, there was like a day that we could all get together. So that's why I would like very much.
Only, it was my understanding that only six of us are available that day, not even all of us, so there is not a day for us to get together before December 31st.
There you go. So the point was, operationally, Jennifer, an ad hoc committee would get us moving faster and set the guidelines that we need to bring to the table, so that we're not just sort of throwing, treating it casually. If you want to do it, let's do it seriously and do it professionally, figure out what the parameters are, bring it to the table, make a decision, have a couple of names in front of us, and then move on it. I don't, you will be able to watch the video, I assume, the live stream, but we can all, I don't think this is going to happen in December, quite honestly. And I get your point about doing this, I actually, my original draft had this at the second meeting in January, make sure that we present our things, and we can't, to your point about new members, we can't just wait for everyone to catch up. I have great faith in the two folks, Jason Tzadzidis and Darcy Burwick are going to be right up to speed really quickly, plus we're having an excellent onboarding in the next week.
All right, so we're doing.
I just wanted to be clear, I was not saying that Jason nor Darcy would have a problem. I would say we need to support them, especially through their first year, as our board operating procedures say, and coming into this situation is challenging for the seven of us. I just want to be cognizant of the learning curve that we all know is a part of being a trustee.
We know they'll be on the learning curve, but just to be blunt, I don't think that's a reason to not do this, so.
I'm not saying that to do it.
Well, I'm not really sure what you said then. Susan and Jenny?
Yeah, so I'm thinking real quick, but I forgot what I was going to say.
Would you like Jenny to go first while you gather your thoughts?
So, yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I fully understand, as I've had to miss meetings in the past too, but as long as we have a quorum, I think that we cannot hold up board business. And so that, I think we need to move forward in December, and if trustees can't be here, then we need to, the five who can be here need to move things forward.
If the ad hoc committee has something by then, sure.
I just wanted to point out that special meetings can be called. I know by president, or by any two board members. So if two of the ad hoc, we get a quorum, that kind of thing, to make a decision, we can do that prior to December, well, not prior to December. But, you know, I'm, just to move that along.
And just the last month and a half, we've called three special meetings, so yeah, we'll wear that one. Okay, are we ready to put this to a vote then? All in favor?
Do you have a second on your?
I do, it's Lauren.
Can you read the motion?
One more time, of course, to direct, motion is to direct the board president to create, create with all due haste, an ad hoc committee to research the parameters for engaging an independent third-party to conduct a transparent review of the athletic department and present their findings as soon as possible, I don't know, by the next board, by the next meeting of the board, or as early in January as possible. That is the motion.
Just a point of clarification, that you would be assigning an ad hoc committee by January? What's the timeline on that?
I'm surprised, okay. I will be creating an ad hoc committee as soon as conceivably possible. I will put out the ask to the board members tomorrow to see who's interested, and create the committee as soon as possible, probably by Friday, okay? But I'm not going to write all that in, I mean, we'll just, I'm not dragging my feet, I'm trying to get this done as soon as possible professionally and properly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I wish I could, thank you very much, six, seven, seven zero. I'm going to move on as quickly as possible. So we're going to aim for alacrity here. I'd like to entertain, oh, sorry, entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Leslie Hundley, I got to get my glasses on. Say it again, Hund, that's what I said, Hundley. To the Celine District Library Board for a two-year term beginning December 1st, 2024, is submitted by Superintendent Lott and recommended by Carrie Warala, Library Director. Leslie Hundley currently serves on the Celine District Library Board, and her term expires at the end of this month. All in favor, I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
You do.
J S. Second?
Me.
Lauren Gold, do you know this person? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the library board. Welcome back to the library board, Leslie. Was she here? Second, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the audit report is submitted by Assistant Superintendent Miranda Owesley.
Make it.
Brad Gerby?
Second.
Tam Austin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I didn't say aye, sorry, I wasn't fast enough. I say aye.
Thank you. I can hear you, we don't need the mic for that. To, next, recommend a motion to adopt the annual summer tax resolution, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Miranda Owesley. This is your chance, Jennifer.
So moved.
Tim?
Support.
Jennifer Stebbin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, thank you. Recommend a motion to approve the blue, this, oh, Cody's gone, to approve the Blue Energy Group in the amount of $73,002 for tax consulting services related to the IRS Investment Tax Credits, ITC, as part of the Inflation Reduction Act, IRA, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Owesley.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brad.
Second.
Thank you, Lauren. I don't know if we need much discussion on this, but.
I do have a question on that. Is that $73,000, is that, can we use bond funds to pay that bill, or is that general fund dollars?
Miranda?
Yes, it will be bond dollars for that service, and then in general, when we get, if we get a tax rebate, then that will also go back to the bond funds to be, to be kind of refunding and extend our use.
Okay. Miranda, this is an awful lot of money, but they pay back or pay off or be exceptional?
We are using this service, and we're hoping to get tax credits in the millions of dollars. So in general, it does seem like it's a service, it's not in our realm of general operations, the IRS, you know, we do payroll taxes, and that's the only thing the district does. These are relatively new, and I've been tracking this project as we've gone along and keeping it in mind, and also had lots of meetings with a lot of different people to see what it would cost to have someone consult on this work for us, because in general, it's a lot of money to put on the line, and it isn't something that's been around for schools before, and so it is very new, and the first ones just came out. And there's also a lot of different levels of requirements, and so putting out the RP and realizing, some people said percentage-wise of the rebate, and that wasn't something I was interested for the district, but at this point, that I feel like is a very good investment in the district to maximize our rebates in this category.
Excellent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think we're all in favor of money. Recommend a motion to approve the closed session minutes from the October 21st board meeting under Section 81B, and both closed sessions at the October 22nd board meeting under Section 81A and 81H. Now, you're going to have a tricky situation, because you weren't at one and not at the other, correct?
So it would need to be broken into two, because I have to abstain.
Or abstain.
I have to abstain from the meeting, I wasn't out. Yeah, the motion has to be split, I don't think I, I should, I don't think I should vote on a meeting I wasn't in.
Here we go, I'm going to do two motions then, to approve this closed session minutes from the October 21st board meeting. And the second motion, oh, yeah, let's hear that, Brad.
Go ahead, Gerby.
BG.
Support.
S E, okay, and without any discussion, the motion to, to approve the closed session minutes from the October 22nd board meeting.
Should we just do them in order?
Doesn't, yeah, whatever. All right, we'll do them in order. Well, could I have a motion for that one, then we'll, there's no discussion, I'm sure. Hey, Brad, would you like to move?
So moved.
Tim, thank you. Anyone want to support Tim?
Put me in.
Is that Susan? Okay, great, so now we have the motions out there. Those of you who are new to this procedure, we read the closed session minutes quietly, because it's not going to the public, and then we get back to our secretary. If you've had a chance to read, all in favor of the October 21st minutes, please say aye.
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 I'm going to read six and one extension.
Abstain.
I'm still reading. Damn, sorry. Aye.
Thank you. All in favor of the October 22nd minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Pardon? Yeah, good, great, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Secretary Miller, you've done a, once again, phenomenal job of keeping track of these minutes. I'd like to entertain, you're on. I know. Before 10 o'clock, come on. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the sex ed curriculum grades fourth through eighth as proposed by the SEAB in compliance with Michigan law. Do we have a motion? Now, this is, now I understand, because I missed some of this, there's option A and there is option B. We're talking about option A at this point, the curriculum without any changes, correct?
Yeah, as is, recommendation.
As is, all right. Do we, do we have a motion to approve?
Uh, support.
Sorry. Motion to support, motion to, you've moved, you've moved.
I am moving.
Do we have a support?
Support, Miller.
Thank you very much. I believe now it is time for a discussion as to, and I, if you think we're ready to move forward with this. Anyone want to start? And I would like to thank Kristin Hoffman-Piebler and Assistant Principal Cam Cameron, who were, make, Dr. Cam Cochran, what did I call you again? Cam Cameron, that's close enough, Cam Cochran, I'm sorry, my apologies, my apologies. Okay, if you could just sort of be on standby to answer any questions, I know you're going to be getting a few, so. I'm not hearing any questions. Oh, I hear one question, one hand.
I just, so, one of the things that I've been thinking about over the months and months that we've been discussing this is that the state has outlined a process for how, for how this particular piece of curriculum is decided upon. And it's, I think to my knowledge, it's the only curriculum that has legal mandates around how it is reviewed and how it is, how it is evaluated and then put forth for a recommendation. And one of the things that I heard repeatedly around this particular selection and the group in particular that was tasked with making this decision, and otherwise called the SEAB or SEAB. They, they, what I heard repeatedly from our district leadership is that this was a diverse group that had a wide, wide diversity in their backgrounds and in their beliefs and in their just general experiences. And so, the thing that I keep coming back to is that the process was followed, the process was followed with a variety of people who represent a wide variety of people from our community. And the outcome was that, correct me if I'm wrong, but that it was all, it was, everyone voted to bring it forward for a recommendation, except one person abstained, they didn't vote against. And so, when I think about the process and I think about the legality around how sex ed or reproductive health curriculum is, is selected, I keep coming back to that process. And if, if there are people who feel strongly around how the process should be changed, recently, we saw some other education policies and legislation change around reading. And, and I know that because that's my area of expertise. And so, I know that our officials, our legislators are listening to their constituents. But for now, with the parameters that we have been given, and the legislation that we have been given, and the recommendation from our SEAB and experts in the field of child development and medicine, I feel strongly that, that this is the appropriate action to take.
Thank you. If there are no other.
I'm also in agreement. And one thing I wanted to clarify, because I've been seeking input, is that decisions on how the classes will be set up, whether it will be, is going to be left to the administration. It's, the SEAB has the recommendation, but that has not yet been decided. So just for clarity, because I got that question more than any other. I, I have an opinion on it, but I'm not going to be teaching it, nor am I an administrator. So, I just, that is a question I heard a lot, and feedback I heard a lot, and so I just wanted to clarify that. I, you know, fifth graders learn about really hard things, like enslaved people. And, and my kids heard about Anne Frank before I was ready for them to, and really hard, tough things. And so I understand that people have concerns about age appropriateness, but boy, there's a lot of stuff that I think fifth graders learn. And developmentally, they really are, at eight or nine, you can start thinking about more complex topics. And so, I feel comfortable with the curriculum as is, and I support it.
Susan's.
Sorry. So, I guess I'm going to try to be quick to a couple of the points. I believe there was a question, something brought up earlier that I think was answered at the last meeting, that once this is passed, this is the curriculum, that will go into the school. So it's not, you could take out and add and all of that. I believe that was clarified last time by the co-chairs and looked into by admin and everything. As far as, yes, there's a recommendation with that curriculum, as far as it being inclusive with genders. And currently with our transgender and non-binary students policy, that would be consistent with how it should be going right now. I know, we go back to the Weber Blas, I'm saying that totally wrong. That if we go back to that and the stance that we took, taking into consideration the transgender and non-binary students policy, it is only appropriate that we have mixed gendered classes with sex ed, and I, I propose that that move quickly.
So, okay, can I go? Okay, so, a couple of things. One is, it's no surprise, I'm not for this curriculum. I think that the age appropriateness is, is not there for me. I also think that, back on 522, I emailed trying to not have the first public hearing on June 10th. I thought that was too early, the week after school was out. And so, many people weren't even looking at it or weren't even involved in it. And so now we are in a situation where we have staff members that are concerned about it, and they want to know what the process looks like going forward. And if we look at our, our policy, we, there cannot be any changes to it per policy, once it's approved. Any changes have to come back to us. So, I think it's important that, we all know, what we vote on now is what we have. And they, they can't just free will, will he change anything?
Michael called point of privilege and apologies, since I just had to do that as well. I can jump in for him. Any other?
Can I say, I just wanted, there was one thing that I forgot to mention before. One of the things that I think is, is quite brilliant on the part of the, of the legislature, which also gave me more confidence in moving this forward, is that for a variety of reasons. And we heard from someone tonight who had maybe a very different reason for needing to opt her, their child out of, out of participating in reproductive health last year. But one of the things is that it does give, this particular piece of legislation does give power and choice to parents to opt out of it in its entirety, or to opt out of parts and pieces or sections of the curriculum. And so, with that, with that, I feel that, or I guess I believe that that is allowing for all of our students to be seen and heard and acknowledged for who they are. It's also a measure of safety for all of our children. And it allows for the ability for parents to tailor the program to the needs of their students, whatever the reason might be.
Oh, Jennifer.
I had Jenny go on your call. She had her hand up first. So, I, I wrote down some comments because, again, I didn't want to miss anything, because like, like some of the other topics that we've had tonight, this is incredibly important as well. First of all, Cameron, I wanted to thank you very much for allowing me the time to come to your office and review the binders and the videos, and you taking time to answer some of my questions. I think it's incredibly important. I think for me, it was a, a good process. What I do is I, I see things, then I hear, then I listen to everybody, and then I go back and I turn the pages. And that's just how I, I learn and, and for myself, and it really helped during the life skills curriculum when I did that. And I, I thought that that turned out how, how it should turn out for those, those students. So, thank you very much for taking that time. In flipping through the binder, both binders and the videos, I think that the curriculum is solid. I think there are a lot of good lessons. I think we absolutely desperately need a new sex ed curriculum. I was pretty, pretty thrilled to see some modernization in many, many areas. And it incorporated things like consent and bullying and boundaries and things like that, social media, which is a huge thing. I wish we would double down and even add more videos and content around that. However, the cons to this for me are, I believe that, now, two of you sit on the sex ed advisory board, so you probably have a little bit more understanding than the rest of us. But from what I understand, I'm the only trustee that looked at the binders and the video in Cameron's office that could have changed in the last week. I think that, to Tim or Susan's point, and I apologize because I don't remember which one of you made this, that there can be no changes to content after a vote. It can be operationally run by the principals, Steve, everyone, teaching and learning. But the content itself, an opt-out solution is, is available, as Jenny said, but the content can't be changed. So for example, if there's, if there's something that is in lesson four and, and the teaching staff determines we're going to do everything, so the board passes all of lesson four, and then the staff decides we're going to do all of lesson four except for page three, they can't do that, because that's, that's against the policy of the board. So I think we need to allow them time to discuss that. You know, there had been a, a conversation point around, we should pass this and then it gets operationalized. I think it's the exact opposite process. We need to better understand how this is operationalized, and then we pass it. So then we have a content consistency in decision from the board table. So then the teachers who have already been consulting in that and workshopping that know exactly what we're voting on, and they, as the subject matter experts, have been able to endorse and co-create in that process. A lot of times in business, we say we must go slow to go fast, and that you have to get it right and go slow in the beginning, and then it goes smooth sailing in business. And I, I think that that's a really good analogy here. I have really appreciated hearing from the heritage teachers. I would love to hear from the middle school. I, I haven't heard from any middle school teachers in this, so I would love to know what they think. Okay, I'm sorry, hearing from them as far as emails and, and at the board table. I feel like the heritage team has been very present at the, at the board meetings. So I would just love to know if they feel similarly or different ways. And by giving them more time, I think that is a good idea, because then they can workshop that. I also did ask if we had time, if this was voted on to operationalize this by spring, and I was told no. So that tells me that we have more time to give them. I want to go back to what I said in the very beginning, to make sure that people heard me correctly. I think this is a solid curriculum. I think that it has a lot of great lessons. I think we desperately need this. I think we are so close, but for me, the subject matter experts of our teaching staff with regards to this content, come number one. And then understanding how we operationalize this, so we can have an absolutely clean vote per policy is how I see things happening. So, I don't want that to be misconstrued, that I don't think it's a good curriculum. I just, process-wise, I don't think that we're there yet.
To avoid tabling this, I would like to put it to a vote at this time. All right, thanks, Brad. Let me just look at my notes here, okay. We have moved by E Step, seconded by Jenny Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you. So that's five, five two, thank you very much. First of all, to the SEAB co-chairs, thank you for your service. I don't know if you're coming back again for another two years of this grueling adventure, Kristin. But I, I hope that the curriculum gets updated more frequently.
May I just have a point of clarification? What, one did you pass, A or B?
Option A.
As is. Okay, I didn't hear that.
As is. I would also like to say that last week, I, on Friday, attended a group at Lansing Governmental Relations. They are making massive changes to the SEAB regulations, haven't been updated since 2003, I think it was, or 2005. Everything from removing clergy from the team to talking about sex trafficking, et cetera, et cetera. They are, we are actually, we're doing, I think, very well. We'll be well in line with this. So, if it gets passed during lame duck, look for changes to the SEAB lineup very soon.
And, oh, sorry, just real quick, that might be something, like your feedback, Jennifer, looking into that, right? As a legal component, like you were talking about process and stuff, so I just wanted to mention that. If, if it's in the legislation, like, it might be something you want to be at or contact your legislators.
Before we go on, I just want to ask a quick question. Mr. Murray, doing okay? All right, thank you. I appreciate your patience, sir. I wrestled with the idea of moving into closed session a bit early, but I think we can rocket through some of these next steps. Thank you. Discussion items, board finance committee meeting update, Brad Gerby.
I can definitely rocket. We heard about the audit process earlier and the, and the good position that we are in. We're grateful and thankful for that. So that was, there was, there were two items on our agenda, because there are two things the finance department kind of obsesses about, student count and foundation allowance. And so, the other item that was on our agenda was a definitive lockdown of what our headcount is. And so, our headcount is as follows. We had budgeted for a loss of 110 students for the year. And after you do a lot of work with regards to headcount and then FTE and all of that, we are now saying that we will have a loss of 75 students. And so, that is a differential in our favor of, of what I would say is positively of 35 students. So if you take that roughly times $9,600, you could do the math, that's a good position for us to be in. So, yeah, so that's that. And like I said, we talked about the audit. And the finance department, or our finance team, I want to thank everybody who's on the finance team, because we will be in recess until the 2025 year, and I'm thankful to the board, I'm thankful to the team, I'm thankful to everybody who has entrusted the treasury to, to our stead. And like I said, Miranda Owesley makes this look. the treasury to, to our stead. And like I said, Miranda Housley makes this look really good.
Brad, I just want to say thank you. When we, three or four of us talked about creating a treasurer position, we were, we were unique. I know you discussed it and since Valenti and I all discussed it. And you have fleshed out that role quite substantially, and I greatly appreciate your work and your efforts. Moving on to the Board Policy Committee, speaking of people who are doing exceptional work, we have two up for discussion and I have a few questions about each of them. So it's all yours, Jennifer Miller.
Okay. Sorry, I, sorry, I just need to get to the memo on the Title IX. So basically, sorry, I don't have the memo up in front of me. Let me get to that piece, or if you want to pull it up. The, basically what we are looking at is that, as we know, Title IX is, is a, is something that we often have to refer to, and it is something that we, when we do have an issue around Title IX, we seek the advice of legal. And, and when we have sought advice from legal, it has been TRUEN. That is the, the legal team that we look to for that, for helping us to navigate some of the intricacies and details around Title IX. And so when considering a policy for our district regarding Title IX policies and procedures, we have to consider which policy we might put in our catalog. And so when we met with the, when we met with the policy committee, we had some input from Carol Diglio, who is our Title IX coordinator. And she has been working very diligently with our team of administrators and getting them updated in their training around Title IX. And the platform that they're using for training is TRUEN. TRUEN offers that and it's in alignment with the policies and it is updated whenever the law is updated. Additionally, now we've been in discussion around, we have administrative guidelines and policy on our page. We're looking towards moving to having forms on that page as well. And TRUEN has forms ready. And should we decide to include forms on that platform, we would have those forms ready immediately to be added. That would be consistent with the training that our district receives, the legal advice that we receive from TRUEN, and the policy that would be in our policy, book of policies. So when we were discussing this as a committee, we felt that adopting the policy that was written by TRUEN would be the most effective policy for our, our book of policies. So we are asking, the policy committee is asking for you to consider adopting and adding this policy to our platform. And just so you know, we have adopted other policies that are not Neola policies in the past, and they can be added to our platform, even though it is a Neola platform.
Which, what do you mean by that? Like another?
Like we have written our own policies.
Oh, yeah.
Or if TRUEN has policies that we've used before, we can add those. It doesn't have to be a Neola policy.
Okay, haven't, not the TRUEN specifically.
Right, right, right. Exactly. But we can, is what, yeah. So it's, there's no conflict, I guess, is what I was saying. It would be, it could be added. Yes, common practice. It can be added.
And we can do the forms as well. Any, any forms, right, besides Neola?
Are you, do you want to run the, do you want to call for discussion? Oh, no, I mean, we call for, do you want to call on people? I guess is what I was asking. Do you want to run the discussion?
The facilitate? Susan, and then I have a question to ask you.
Okay. I know in the past, actually, I believe it was the ad hoc committee, of me and Michael, maybe, we had brought, we had looked at a couple of different services as far as like policy services, and TRUEN was one of those. And at that point in time, we had said, and Miller and Johnson, I think we looked at as well, at that point in time, we had decided that we weren't going to change with Neola. And so it sounds like we've added Neola, or sorry, TRUEN, yes, TRUEN, TRUEN, whatever, that we added, it sounds like superintendent went ahead and did the handbooks with TRUEN. And so I know that TRUEN, TRUEN is a, is a law firm that provides the trainings. And I think that's great. I don't think Neola is, you know, one who does that right. And I think with Title IX, there's very specific language that needs to be used, I guess, in every district. And so I hope that that would be consistent across all districts. Who knows, Title IX is probably going to change January 1. So, so I, I guess I'm questioning, well, do we have the Neola to draft as well?
Yeah, so we did consider the Neola policy in policy, in the policy committee. And I'll tell you a couple of reasons why we decided not to go forward with it and not to, to bring that to the board for our recommendation.
Isn't that an omission?
Well, we were asked to consider both and make a recommendation to the board, and we made a recommendation to bring TRUEN forward.
Okay, can you send that, that one to us later?
I think.
The Neola one?
Yeah. Do you know, yes, I'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
But the reason why we decided not to continue to look at the Neola policy is because of a couple of things. But the biggest being that our Neola rep left Neola in August and a new rep has not been assigned to us, and they have not been very responsive to us. And so when we were considering something as, as intricate and as important as Title IX and, and how frequently things might change and need adapted, we felt that having someone who was more responsive was to our benefit.
And to add another important part, every, well, often when we have a Title IX issue, we're involving TRUEN. We have, we have a lot of legal issues that we have to discuss. So it, it doesn't really make sense in this case to have a policy written by Neola that may not align with TRUEN for this particular policy. It's, we're not saying we're adopting, you know, all, all the other TRUEN policies. But for this one, where there, where we do have a number of issues that develop every year with this, that's also why we need this TRUEN policy.
Just lastly, the other thing that I'll say is that the, the policy committee has given updates around policy at least twice a year from Neola. They come in like a batch email. And we consider those policies and consider which ones to move forward. We don't always move all of them forward for full board discussion. So I didn't see that this would be any different. But I am happy to find the Neola policy and send that to you. We, we really didn't, in looking at the merits of the two, they're very similar. However, we felt that the support and the updates and the training and the forms all being in alignment was important.
I do have a question. One of the TRUEN, this is for Jenny, and the policy committee, one of the TRUEN pages listed the actual names of some of the people. We obviously are taking those names off. It's titles only, correct?
Yeah, that's, and we did talk with Betty about that. So in our version of this policy, it will have titles. However, correct me if I'm wrong. I know Betty's gone. But I think the, and maybe Carol, you would know. But I think on the website, you would be listed as the Title IX coordinator. So people would know how to get in contact with you. So it's not needing to be changed in the policy should the personnel change. But on the website, it is to be updated. Is that correct? She's nodding. Okay.
So, so, so previously, it was changed because the superintendent is supposed to update us annually. I believe that's on the current policy. I don't know that we've consistently had annual updates on those changes. So are you saying that you're going to take off this 2264B designation of coordinators, who is Carol Diglio and Lindsay Gunther? And then there's also the civil rights and all of that, that's getting?
Yeah, so I, I'm not, because Betty's not here to speak to this, but in our discussion, to be in alignment with our previous decisions and with our previous, I guess, decisions at the board table, we had decided to not name them in the policy, but to name them on the website. So that is correct. I, I am unclear, sorry, as to why it wasn't changed in the draft that was sent to you. But that is a change that would be made. So that could be made before our second discussion in December. I'll ask Betty if she could do that.
Is there a motion to approve at this point, this?
No, our, our practice is to have two discussions.
Oh, this is our first reading?
And this is our, well, we talked to Carol previously about it. Yeah, if you want to come up. We talked to Carol previously about it, but then the policy committee went back and made the recommendation to move forward with this collection of policies from TRUEN almost.
One of the greatest benefits of, of working with TRUEN in this particular case is that all of the administrators had to go through another three-hour training. They were one of the few, and in a very fast manner, were able to do a shortened video that we would put on our vector solutions, where we do all of our training, our bloodborne pathogens. They were able to put together a very quick training. So our entire staff got trained. The thing that's really nice about the package is that Title IX is extremely tedious. The second that there is a grievance or a complaint, then there are several steps. And it is so tedious that TRUEN has set it up that those letters are set up concisely and in order. And they allow for us to move quickly through the process instead of fumbling through and trying to figure out the process. The, it, it, it is a timely process and it is a package that allows us to, we're able to do it, and then we're also able to consult if it isn't, if it's something out of the ordinary. It's just a great partnership in that respects because there are so many layers to this. The website, what we would do is take our grievance process and make that very transparent on our website, along with Lindsay and I as, as the coordinators. And then make sure the complaint form is also on the website and it's all aligned with the policy. It's just, it's very user-friendly is the best way of putting it, in a cumbersome process that's really important to get it right, right out of the gates.
I guess my, my, thank you so much. I think my concern is that it's right off the bat, like, coming from a legal component versus like a policy standpoint. So I don't know if that automatically, I guess in a defensive way, like defending, right? I don't know at what point, like, you could, you pull them in, right? It's not like consistently through that process. I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, it's, that the process maybe involving legal early on may not be good going through that. If that, I don't know if that makes sense.
No, I know what you're saying. I, I guess what I was thinking, and, and Carol, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this because what I was thinking when we were having these discussions was that it wasn't necessarily consulting legal as a defense, but as a way of making sure that we were following the law the way that it is written. And because there are frequent updates and, and cases around this that set precedence, we would have the most up-to-date information. That's, that's how I understood it. But if you could explain how you've used legal in the past in a way that doesn't divulge any confidence?
I mean, there's a lot of policy that is threaded with legal aspects. That's not unusual at all. It's also not unusual for you to use a company like Neola and then pull in other pieces that this is really about a clean process and a process that is very well outlined for us to, to move right into. It's, it's tedious. I, I mean, I, I just sat through a second three-hour training just last week because I don't feel like you can hear it enough.
Oh, yeah, I gave college, many, many college students Title IX trainings when I worked at the university.
Yep. So you know, so when you, when you have, our, unfortunately, Neola, we don't have a rep. This went into effect August 1st. We had to act quickly on getting everyone trained. And then we had the other issue with the mothers of liberty list, and we landed on that. So there were a lot of moving parts, and this was a, a really positive way to move. And I appreciate the policy committee inviting me because we had to move swiftly and make quick changes. And still, I'm waiting to update things on our platform until it's, until the board makes a decision. But we're, I'm meeting tomorrow about Title IX with Lindsay. We're positioning ourselves and getting ready. We're just waiting for the board to make their final decision.
Before we, Susan?
Oh, I just, did you all consider any language that you may want to point, like, pull in from Neola at all? Do you know what I mean?
And they have policy writers too, that have already written.
And so we would go with TRUEN when there's a Title IX, like automatically.
You know what I think might be helpful also, Susan, is when we're talking a lot and doing a lot of work around policy and then getting our administrative guidelines aligned up with that, this marries the two together. Neola doesn't as thoroughly give us our administrative guidelines. So those forms, those forms literally like the complaint form, the supportive measures form, the complaint notice, all of those, you can look at as our administrative guidelines. And they're married with the TRUEN policy, which, I mean, Title IX is Title IX. The, the language is not that, that different. It just is, the alignment is much smoother for a quick implementation especially.
I'll, I'll have Brad and then I'll follow up.
I just have one quick question. It's this. Does not having this in place like right now, does this impact our ability to like do an investigation if we needed to do one tomorrow?
We're, we're trained. I'm trained. The administrators are trained. We've already had to do one this year. We get questions about it and discuss it. We would manage. I, I mean, we would, we would get through it and manage, but it would be, the sooner the better is, is the way. But it, it's, it's no fault to the board because it changed August 1st.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm like the guy who's trumpeted like two readings, two readings, two readings. And so for me, I just want to make sure that we wouldn't be vulnerable to not being able to do this important.
The law, the law is still the law.
Yeah, the law is still the law.
Yeah.
And we could have passed this months ago.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we, I think we have enough people that have been trained and have gone through it, and we had advisors.
Thank you. And we, and we met with, we met with Carol more than once. Well, she came to one meeting and then she and I had conversation because she was in negotiations and was unable to come to our second meeting. And so I brought forth her thoughts on this to our consideration and our discussion. And I think the other thing just to, to consider, we did not consider piecemealing, like taking parts of Neola and putting it in with TRUEN because they both follow the law, but this is just streamlining the process. So if that, with, with looking at the time, I would like to, if, if we can move any further, anything further to our discussion in December, this will come back to the table for a second reading then. Okay.
Jenny?
Yes.
Because of the lateness of the hour, the fact that we have a guest. Now, I suggested, I whispered this to Steve and he laughed, but I would like to consider tabling the I whispered this to Steve and he laughed, but I would like to consider tabling the DEIAC policy.
So you, you may do that. And if you do, then you will be...
Will you hurt me?
What? No, I don't, that's fine. If you decide to move this to December, I just want to tell you that if you move it to December, a new policy chair will take over in January for the second reading.
Oh, no problem.
I mean, we, the policy, policy committee did the work.
We can, but can we be, can we, this is the second reading, so can, I just am worried that we're going to stay, be here till midnight before we even hear from Ryan Murray.
I did not let...
Oh, no, I'm just, you just said, you do, he said, there's no way they'll move it. But that's okay. I apologize. I apologize. Didn't want to throw you under the bus on that one. All right, then. Thank you, Jenny. We're going to go on to DEIAC policy. We're considering, we've had a first reading now of that previous policy?
No.
No? We're not done yet?
So memo, memo number one is the membership considerations. And so if, in looking at this, at the memo, this is the second reading for that portion of the policy. And the reason why we broke this out into two and have already had the discussion around this was so that the policy committee could move forward with seating new policy members. And in talking with Ryan, Dr. Kerr, it is my understanding that even though we had not, we had not passed this, they did have the blessing of Michael to move forward with seating people. And so they have seated those people. So, and they're, and he's contacting them. But in looking at this particular portion of the policy, you can see in the memo and also in the policy that's listed. So in the policy that's listed in the packet, you can see the, and somehow I've lost my, there's too many things that we had to look at tonight. I have the memo open, but I don't have the full packet in front of me. I apologize for that.
Do you want this?
I just don't have the pa, yeah, thank you. So in looking at the full red and green, and following up on our discussion from last time, you can see in memo number one that the revision began, it began with a recommendation from Dr. McVay, which then led to two separate legal opinions. The second one was received an email and was forwarded to all of you back on October 21st. And so that has led us to the following language. I'm going to put on my glasses, because I'm old now. "The superintendent and/or their designee shall serve as co-chair, and an additional co-chair shall be selected by the superintendent and/or their designee with committee feedback, include, excluding, sorry, with committee feedback excluding the board trustee representatives. This co-chair shall be selected from the existing committee, and at least one of the co-chairs shall be a parent of a child attending a district school. Application shall be revised and decided upon by the superintendent and/or designee co-chair, one student rep, and two additional volunteer committee members. Board of Education trustees may observe the application selection process, but not deliberate or decide. Applications will be reviewed on a rolling basis, and then C, it says, if selected the applicants, the applicant will be notified by the superintendent and/or their designee when a vacancy becomes available." So that is the language that we are entertaining in a second reading tonight. For some reason, I did inquire about this, but I didn't get a response. I know things have been really busy. But this particular memo and its contents was supposed to be an action item tonight, because this is our second reading. So if we are in agreement with this particular language, we could seek a motion tonight to accept this piece. But as I said, Ryan was, Dr. Kerr and his co-chair were able to move forward, I think seating the committee. I'm not sure, because it does say here that "the Board of Education Trustees may observe the application selection process, but not deliberate or decide." And I, I know that I have been attending my daughter's field hockey the last two games. Sadly, her field hockey season has ended, so that will give me a little bit more time to be available to, for these meetings. But I wasn't at the last two meetings, so I don't know if there was a decision on how the trustees would observe. I did not get any information around that.
I wasn't invited to the meeting, so there you go.
Okay.
I have a comment or slash point of clarification too, Jenny. I just wanted to go back to something. You said that they, the committee has seated members?
That was a conversation that I had with Dr. Kerr last week, and they were, they had been, the, the committee itself had been, the numbers were lacking. And so because we'd had the discussions, and because they had the two co-chairs, it's my understanding that they went ahead and set this.
Okay. Michael, can you, can you verify, and I'm sorry, I just want to...
I'm doing it right now.
Did the DEIAC seat members other than the co-chair?
I'll verify that right now. DEIAC members who are in the audience, did we seat eight new members? So I, we'll ask Dr. Kerr tomorrow then.
Okay, because on October 21st, you said that they would not, that they would go according to the board wishes from the board table, and that we, because of potential liability from the legal letters that Jenny had him provided, that we were holding off on that until we could come back and move this policy through. So I just wanted to confirm.
Well, and it wasn't...
And if Susan wasn't invited, so I mean...
I wasn't either.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and I think, honestly, honestly, as long as the DEIAC board rep is not appointing, right, this should have happened over the summer, to be honest. You know, like I said, a committee, a president, a superintendent shouldn't be holding up a process. You know, I know there was a question about the OMA, but clearly, that's, that's not an issue. It hasn't been violated. So I'm...
I see your point. I see your, I see your point, Susan. My, my point, and your point, understandable and helps with the legal situation potentially. My point is, we gave direction from the board table, and I said, "Hi, Steve, I would like to please confirm that while a co-chair was selected for DEIAC, the group has held off on selecting any new members as directed by the board in our open meeting." Thank you.
And Dr. Kerr is not here. I can just tell you that in our conversation, he expressed to me that he and the co-chair had met, and that they were in the process of contacting new members.
Okay, so they went against the Board of Education with that movement, if that occurred?
So was that a vote that we took?
It was a conversation that we had at the table. We had all agreed. I mean, it's, I assume we have the video.
Because it wasn't a second reading yet. It was my understanding that they were going to wait. However, I'll say, yes, it was a conversation that we had, that we were waiting for the second reading. And also, I understand the urgency that the co-chairs were operating and seating them. But I agree with Susan that if, if that was the case, you know, it could have been done months ago.
Before anyone seeks to chastise Dr. Kerr, I'm not looking at you.
I'm definitely not.
I'm seeking to clarify a statement that Jenny made when reading the policy.
Before anyone seeks to chastise Dr. Kerr, let me tell you how the conversation went. He asked me specifically, is it okay if he starts to look through the folders and the files and the names to isolate and identify people that they think should be on the board? He asked me again, and asked me again, and Susan was in the meeting at that point. And we, we said, we think it's okay at this, or at least I said, I think it's okay. But we haven't heard any names yet, and we have, they're not meeting again until next Wednesday. So before we...
I didn't have any sort of decision in that. So, and it was said that, in the committee meeting, that yes, move forward. So, and again, I'm telling you that there was no violation of OMA.
That's not my concern, but thank you, Susan.
Yeah.
I, my, my point is, we had decided in an open meeting that it would halt until we could get this through, because we had all agreed that that was the procedure. I had verified that after the meeting, because there was another email string internally. It was confirmed. And then on November 4th, I believe, Michael sent a board update on the DEIAC and did not mention anything with moving forward.
So I'll just, I, I don't, I don't want, I'm not, I'm not indicating or even insinuating that Dr. Kerr did anything nefarious or anything that he shouldn't have done. So I just want to say that publicly.
Yeah, I get it.
We had a conversation, because he had some questions that he wanted to have clarified. So we had a conversation last Tuesday, and that's when he indicated that he, he understood the conversation that had occurred at the DEIAC meeting, I think on the 29th or 30th?
30th.
The 30th, that he was given permission to move forward. So regardless, we can deal with that, and I think in another, but...
And the action of the board is voting.
Yes.
So if there was not a vote, and it was just simply said, that's not an action of the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, I think that's great, because I did follow up in writing and was told that it would not occur.
So moving forward with this language, this is a second reading, so entertaining further discussion and/or if there is a motion to approve this membership selection process.
So, so I have some questions, because we had made changes. And I don't know if that's completely reflected here. I know it said the superintendent, and we were talking about, because it's not consistent, the language, and we were going to change that, so the superintendent in parentheses or designee. So I know in the new edits, that's not appearing here.
So I, so I'll, I will let you know, there were a couple of things that did not come through, and Betty's not here, so I can't ask her right now. But there were a couple of things that she said would be, like, made to be in alignment, like those, whether it says superintendent and/or their designee, or has it in parentheses, she was going to amend that in the final. And I'm not sure why it wasn't this time. There was another error that I caught too, and I believe that she made the change, but correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong. But we did make the change per our last discussion. I think I even noted it here in the memo, that we removed, because it was not our intent to, it was not our intent to limit the, I think that's in the next piece, actually, in the next memo, so I'll hold off on that.
And then, let me see. So I know it says the Board of Education, so under D, Board of Education, DEI Committee Members and Superintendent or Designee will appoint new members to the committee. That's an action. I think the question was, it used to say DEI reps, board reps. But I think personally, that a point should be taken out of that. Maybe choose, or, I'm not sure. And then, I would like to consider, because I know you all were looking at the Sex Ed advisory.
That was one of, that was, the lawyers had brought that up for our consideration.
Yes. And the last time, when we worked on the initial policy, we sent the actual policy to legal. I don't think we did this, like sending the actual language and getting that feedback. And maybe when everything gets cleaned up, we could do that. But I think, you know, going back to a comment that we heard earlier, when we're talking about CEAB, because this was based off of both CEAB and Wellness, which is a district committee, CEAB being a board. And I know that some of the, mostly the board, CEAB stuff is included in there. I think we should look at that the board chooses, appoints the two co-chairs, because that's what is currently in our Sex Ed, even though we don't, we haven't been doing all of that. And so I think, you know, that that would be an action here. And then, again, I think they're continuing to work on the charter.
Yeah, Ryan and I discussed the charter too. Yeah.
Okay. I'm glad you all had a meeting.
Well, I mean, he just asked if he could have a phone call, so.
So, so yeah, I want us to consider that, because it's not a district committee, which would be under Wellness, and it is a board committee, which is CEAB. I think we should be able to appoint the co-chairs.
Is that the only point of comparison with the SEAB that you want us to consider,
I want to make sure everything from the last, the meeting in September 20, what, 24th, I believe, that it's all reflected there.
I did want to just say, it is here in the green. I now have it in front of me. And I did ask, but it, I, I don't know what happened to that email string, that I asked for this to be moved to an action item. And I also asked for this portion where we had amended it last time, where it says reasonably reflects the district student population. We had asked, yeah, we had asked for that to be stricken. And so I did ask for her to strike that, and I am not certain, yeah, it, but I, I did ask for that. It's not in this red and green, but that is what I had emailed her to update.
We already have a co-chair now. Policy committee can meet again. We just need a DEIAC group pick now. But it sounds like maybe now there's some question of whether it can happen or should be happening. So I'm just suggesting that we just vote on this language. And if we want to do something different about post-picking co-chairs in the future, we could always do that. But otherwise, we...
I'd support that.
So it sounds like there's a motion on the table, on the floor, to approve this changes as...
And I just want to be clear, we're only approving the changes to how we picked the...
Memo number one, yeah.
Although we don't have the actual edits from last time in front of us.
No, she's great, yeah. There's been a lot going in.
We, I believe we've seen the same language.
No, because we made changes September 24th. I want to make sure that there is a clean version, and it has it here. And we've caught three things already, and...
Three things?
Yes, the superintendent or designee, the appointment, which was the question originally.
The appoint, so can you...
Appointing.
Where?
You're saying the Board of Education Committee is appointing. That's under D. I'm looking at it under the board packet.
Yeah, that's, go, go up further.
Susan, I just want to make sure I'm looking at what you're looking at, Susan. Can you give us a page number when you get to it?
Just that portion, I believe.
Okay, so there's a memo. Yes, thank you. So there's a memo, right? And then if you keep scrolling down...
You want page 14 of our packet?
So there's memo one. The next page is memo two.
Yeah, but you, if you keep scrolling...
It's blended. It's all blended.
Yeah, if you keep scrolling, there's the full policy.
With both changes.
It's on page 17. The, the changes in blue are from the 24th, from the policy committee meeting. Those are in memo two. So the one that I did ask for to be amended, and it was not, and I know that things have been very busy, but to strike, and a membership selection process that reasonably reflects the district student population, because it was not our intent to limit.
And there were some other things that was previously there, right?
So that, that particular, that particular language, we, I did acknowledge that it was requested that it be stricken, and it wasn't. But I also acknowledged that it's been a lot of meetings and very busy. And so I'm not, I'm not blaming Betty for that. So I'm just going to say that that, I think we can all agree that that was stricken at the last meeting, in terms of whether it says superintendent and/or designee or parentheses. In the past, when we've had minor changes like that, Betty has been able to update those in the final processing. So I think if we tell her that we want it to be consistent, and we want it one way or the other, she can submit that in the, when she sends it to Neola for processing.
Yeah, I think we did make the decision to be consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I did mention to her that those things were in the September 24th discussion. And in the past, she's been able to make those, like, I would, what do we call them? Scrivener's, Scrivener's errors? So just making it to be consistent. So those... So just making it to be consistent. So those two things, so the striking the one piece because it was not the committee's intent. And then also, uh, the membership piece being, um, reflective of the student population. And then also the making superintendent and/or designate, um, consistent throughout the policy. Anything else?
I'm not sure if there's anything else.
So I think, I don't know, Michael, you said there's a motion to approve the changes in memo number one regarding membership with those adjustments that were, um, discussed on September twenty-fourth.
And you're okay keeping it a point that the board committee members are appointing? A board committee is appointing other people in action.
Can you tell, because that's what we were asking. Where did, can you, can you point us to that?
It says, it says that we tried to do that so it would be more inclusive, so it wasn't just the superintendent and the co-chair. So we added, because we wanted more student voice and more committee voice and picking. That the intent of that was to.
I, I understand. That was kind of the intent, uh, intent to have the board reps to, I guess, involve to kind of oversee that, um,
Yeah.
process because, I mean, I was on the first, back in two thousand nineteen and it was like, the process was just not.
To clarify, to clarify how it happened, this, this year, I, I appointed Ryan as the designate. And, you know, that he would be fully running and supporting as a co-chair. And then he appointed the co-chair, I believe. And, but however you choose to do it, it's fine. It's just, that's how it went this year. I did not appoint, um, the other co-chair.
No, so I think our thing was that, and now the two of them plus a committee, including a student, instead of having a board rep there, since there was some question about the legal, the legality of that.
And let that be consistent with the C I B too.
Yeah, and so, I don't know. I, I just want to focus on this one thing for a second. So the idea was if we ever had a district, you know, if we had a situation where we wanted more than just the superintendent and the co-chair to bring in a diverse amount of perspectives, that having a student voice and other committee members' voices in order to pick the newest committee members made more sense really than having a couple of Board of Ed reps. I, I think it's a good idea.
I'm, I'm, I don't disagree and that process is laid out, right? Um, so I'm not disagreeing on that. I think the word appoint, I mean, maybe, I mean, it's a board committee appointing. I think that's like, we're giving them a power to make decisions. So I just want to put that out there.
I'm asking again, though, you said that it's in D. I don't.
My God, let's see, uh, it's under D. So it's on the next page. It's the last page of the D E I A C in the packet.
What is your concern about giving this smaller subgroup of people, including the D I co-chairs?
No, I'm not.
Like, is that?
No, the decision, the decision. I think from the big, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about the makeup of the committee who's doing the decision. I'm, I'm questioning that word appoint. No, no, I, I'm not questioning the overall thing and input. I think, I think.
Or do you, what word do you want? Like, what, what would be better than a point?
I don't choo- choose, collaborate, like, I don't know. Like, I just think. I, I mean, I said what I think, but. Because the point, the point was there before and that was the whole question to begin with. So, and the, the board, and that didn't come out last time. But the board rep, that's what it said before, right? Board rep and superintendent. So we are telling the board advisory committee that they're making an action now. Does that need to be public?
No.
So who made, I, I've lost track now. Who made the motion? Was, there was a motion to approve memo number one, Brad? Is there support? Because I think we need to, we need to either decide if we're moving on or if we're coming back to this.
Okay, well, let's, yeah.
Then I support. Brad McVeigh.
Okay, I have it written down, but I think you're the president, so you have to call for.
I'd like, well, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed.
Me.
Oh, Susan, great. I just wanted to say, this is a learning experience for me. Uh, I made, my lesson is, you gotta go, of course, my lesson is that I, I made too many edits and suggestions and now I, and to the policy committee, I am fine with you changing that language and adding more people in the decision-making process. That's just great. You stuck to the, the heart of what I was trying to do in that particular thing, which was to move the board members off of the process. And, and it'll be just fine. I think it'll work great.
So in terms of.
And no, and, and to be clear, nobody, the superintendent actually said that the board members have never, he's never run into anything.
That's great.
With the process, just, just to make sure we're clear, because I'm not sure.
Well, he's not here, so I don't want to speak for him.
But another thing is that we, the goal, the goal was to make this D E I A C committee stronger. Thank you. Moving ahead.
So moving ahead to memo number two, um, I just want to quickly, we can just quickly run through this. Um, what I would, um, I guess, I'll just quickly run through this. These were in blue. These are the changes that the policy committee made, um, on our September twenty-fourth meeting. So we changed, um, that, uh, the policy will now read that it can be up to three board members, which has been, which has happened in the past, but is not specified. The next, uh, bullet, these are all out of order, E A D, I just see this now. Um, but, uh, A says, attend regularly scheduled meetings, um, modeling the norms of the bridge of civility, which should be established and reviewed at the beginning of each meeting. That is the current practice, but we felt strongly that because of the nature, um, it, I just put this here, I'll just read. Reading the norms of civility at the start of each meeting can help establish, establish a respectful and inclusive environment where all members feel valued and heard. The practice reinforces the committee's commitment to D E I principles, encouraging an open dialogue and fostering collaboration among participants. Um, the next change, um, that was, uh, a revision is that it is encouraged for full meetings to be in person. However, extenuating circumstances could be considered for online participation by the co-chairs. So holding a closed meeting in person is important as it fosters. Um, trust encourages candid discussions and strengthens relationships among participants. However, due to extenuating circumstances, co-chairs can grant remote access to ensure that all members have the opportunity to contribute and stay engaged, maintaining inclusivity, um, and participation even when physical attendance is not feasible. The next revision says, um, this is the piece, and Michael, if you'd like to address this, but review and make insights. Um, review and, uh, so this was the, the change, um, from review and make recommendations um, to applicable district policies and procedures. It happens again under D. Um, and so the, um, the, uh, explanation is that a board advisory committee should offer insights, um, rather than recommendations to maintain compliance with the, with O M A. As this approach allows for open dialogue and information sharing without crossing into decision-making territory by focusing on insights, the committee can provide valuable perspectives while ensuring that final decisions remain within the jurisdiction of the appropriate governing body, thereby upholding transparency and accountability. The use of the word recommendations could invite scrutiny to the committee's work as it is specifically defined in the rules of O M A. Opting for terms like insights or perspectives can help clarify the committee's role and intent promoting a better, better practices that align with O M A while fostering constructive dialogue without the risk of misinterpretation. The shift from, um, recommendations to insight does not diminish the importance or the value of the work that the committee provides to the board. Rather, it emphasizes and collaborates, um, the nature of the committee's role in forming decision-making. By framing their contributions as insights, the committee highlights their expertise and perspectives, ensuring that their input remains integral to the board's discussions and deliberations. While members of the board advisory committee are not elected trustees, they serve as an important arm of the board, providing valuable insights, um, to support decision-making processes. It remains crucial for committee members to adhere to the rules that govern, um, public bodies as their work is subject to the same standards in transparency, accountability and ethical conduct that guide the actions of the board, ensuring that they uphold the public's trust and maintain the integrity of the advisory role. Um, and in, I don't know, Michael, I had asked, since you had made that, um, that recommendation, if there's anything that you'd like to add to that particular one.
I really don't.
Oh, at this time?
I really don't at this point.
Okay. Um, moving forward then, just reading these. Um, the next recommended, um, revision was that, um, it had been, um, that the D E I A C was presenting quarterly. Um, and to, um, uh, there, the, there was, um, a request for clarity around that. And so the revision says that the, um, D I C will provide, um, sorry, present at least, it says right now, present at least quarterly to the board. So it will be amended to say, will provide regular written reports and one in-person, um, presentation regarding committee activities to the Board of Education. So the reason for this is that all other advisory committees present annually to the board in a meeting. Rather than presenting solely to the board annually, the nature of the D E I, um, advisory committee's work may benefit from quarterly reports as this approach allows for more timely updates on progress, challenges and emerging initiatives. Um, frequent communication can enhance collaboration, fostering accountability and ensuring that D E I efforts remain aligned with the board's goals and the needs of the community throughout the year. Additionally, there was some discussion around minutes, um, that would be available for the board to review for each of the D E I A C meetings. So currently there is a link on the committee sub-page that has been, um, that has, it has a, a place for meeting summaries that were from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, but that practice, practice was not maintained when committee leadership changed. Um, taking a closer look, it appears that other advisory committee websites or links would also benefit from some updates. The policy committee is, I said recommending, but I should say suggesting that a new board operating procedures, uh, board operating procedure might be created to reflect consistent minutes slash summary reporting for all of the advisory committees.
Thank you for your work this year as the policy chair. Throw that out there.
I guess I'll just say too, we have one more meeting in which, um, I will be updating, uh, just, and then we can get back to this, but updating, um, there is new updates from Neola and I'll be, um, bringing those to the surface and allowing for those to continue to be discussed in the new year. And, um, if we have an update from, um, the district on the, um, inventory, I guess, of the, um, flags.
Um, can I just say, I, is there any way to add some language, um, about the, I've been sort of asked to consider, uh, adding some language about how we receive the guidelines or, uh, insights and, um, I think it would be good to add some language to the end of that, saying that the board will vote on approving these and, you know, I think that's something we might want to take up.
If I could say, this is a, a discussion that we, we did have at the last, uh, D E I A C meeting was this, the, the process. They're afraid, and I get it, that if we, they toss up something for the board to consider, there's no sense of processing or seeing, tracking it, where it's going, how it's being reacted to, if it's being ignored or not. And I fully, you know, we can figure out some language.
And, and I wish this started with talking to the D E I A C initially.
I'm sorry, Michael, how many D E I A C meetings have you attended? Because I heard Susan say that she wasn't invited and I heard Lauren say.
No, she's talking about a different meeting.
No, that, that's the selection process with the co-chairs.
Okay. To my knowledge, there were no, um, none of us were invited to that.
I was not at the meeting. I've just been talking to people in the community.
Oh, so Michael has attended the past two.
Two.
And I'm not sure if Michael's the third rep. I, I have no idea, or if you're still, I, I have no clue, so.
I was, I communicated with Michael that I was unable to attend the last two because of family obligations.
If I, if I walked into the room and there were three board members, I would turn around and walk out. I'm, that.
I'm not saying I didn't know if you were showing up as a board rep.
No, I'm just saying, um, I don't know if I'm officially a third or not. I just was there, uh, to, to, uh, cover Jenny.
So getting back to my question, would we want to add a line into that? You know, as to how we receive the insights, since we say written, uh, guidelines and we say one presentation is.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to that. Michael had made the revisions and he said he was at the last meeting and there was discussion around it. So I was waiting for him to tell us more about that discussion, but I'm not opposed to adding that.
It's a work in progress.
Um, I, if we could have a goal though of, um, of moving to the next item, maybe in the next five minutes, if we could wrap this up so that we could, okay.
I'm sorry, the next item in the agenda? We, abs, thank you. Um, the reading has.
Say, because this isn't the final one that we're going to vote on, but I just.
If you have a revision or wording, it, it sounded like Michael was writing something, but maybe not. But if you have wording to put on the table now, now is the time so that we could have it for the next reading.
I will, I'm not sure I can craft it right this moment, but I will certainly submit something to the policy committee before the nineteenth. Is that the date? Nineteenth, okay. Are we ready to move on?
No.
Okay.
Um, so, a few things. Um, when we were talking about the selection, there was talk about consistency with C I B. Um, consistency with advisory boards and seeing all of these new updates, that seems to be not, uh, where we've along the lines of that idea, um, about the initial like membership change and stuff. So, um, I guess, so one thing, modeling the norms of bridges to civility. This is a policy. I don't know if there's a policy of bridges to civility. So ten years from now, when bridges of civility don't, like, that reference may not be, um, accurate. Um, I don't see anything like this in C I B or Wellness. Moving on down, um, the in-person, full meetings being in person with online participation, that is not in advi- other committee things. Um, I feel like, I think I said, a lot of this could be board, board operations, uh, talking about advisory committees and how they function and maybe that's putting that in there, right? This is, this is, you know, the board members' roles, this is the staff roles, um, of advisory committees. Because even if we appoint like an ad hoc committee sometime or whatever, maybe that's things that can apply. Um, and maybe that's where you put bridges of civility. Maybe the title will change, you know? I, I just, someone reading that may not, that may not click for them. So I, I just think it's additional stuff, uh, with, we're talking about a policy, right? And we've just totally crossed.
If, if I can ask, if I can add, um, the full meeting in person. Initially, the recommendation was for full meetings in person, as is, um, the case for C I B. However, we felt that this committee is, um, the very nature of this committee should invite inclusivity. And so, um, Lauren, I think, actually recommended that we add the second piece um, to allow for online pers- participation, um, for extenuating circumstances.
But why have it initially, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. I guess, so for an example, I got an email that, um, the special ed department is, and I think this is great. Um, maybe it's from that, that suggestion, but they're, um, having a, meet, meet the director. And, um, it's, there's, it's going to be via, like, option via Zoom or whatever. So, um, you know, I think that, that's like policy-wise, I, I don't think it sits under here.
Okay, so the purpose of the full meetings being in person is because it's a closed meeting. So in having, um, the options.
Should it say that?
It is a closed meeting.
No, I mean, should it say that's why it's, like, I'm.
You're saying add to the rationale?
Well, I guess, if that's part of the rationale.
Because it says, holding a closed meeting in person, that's, it says that in the rationale below, like, as an explanation for our thinking along.
Fosters trust. Well, I would say. Well, I would say having random board members come into a committee meeting, too, is possibly invading trust as well, so I think, again, I think we're getting into the weeds here. So the review and share insights, really quick, we had talked, that's fine, wow, advisory committee, I've never seen review and share insights anywhere else on advisory committees. Again, if we're sticking with consistent language, which is what we said on the other changes, this isn't consistent. And then, oh, I had notes here, where did they go? So the, with the DIAC, you're saying review and share insights, when there have been, earlier, we talked about the three-year plan, right? And that's, like, the DIAC supports, supports that, and it's part of one of the things that they do. So that's people sharing insights, and, you know, it does come to the board, and it's a partnership, and plus, there's also the equity survey, right? So they're gathering insights. So I think you're downplaying a lot of the work that, what they do bring, and I don't understand why, advisory, I think it was mentioned in September, on September, September 24th, that the word recommendations, you all were saying that that would be a violation, that it needs to be open to OMA, but again, it was brought up at the last board meeting, or last DEIAC, that that's not correct.
So in the explanation that I just read, so, and first, let me just say, that the change to review and share insights was a revision that was brought to the Policy Committee for, for consideration, and we considered it, and are bringing it forward, and our rationale is in the four bullets below.
I heard it.
Okay. Thanks.
But why, why isn't consistent with the other advisory?
There are so many issues you just asked, remind me, which, which one you're talking about this time, this last one?
Well, I'm talking about all of them.
She's asking why, she's asking why review and share insights is here and not in other advisory policies.
Yeah, why is it not recommendations, again, being consistent, because that's what we were pushing for last time? What's review and share insights? It's an advisory board.
Yes.
And they make recommendations, what, like, I've never seen this in other policies in general, so I'm curious what this is.
And I offered you the four points for rationale there, and you said that you heard those, I asked Michael if he had anything further to add.
I do, and yes, now that we're talking about that, very, very simple, I tried to make this really simple, and apparently failed miserably.
Well, I've never heard it before, so.
Well, then let me share it with you.
Go for it.
We do not, there was concern raised to me that recommendations-
From the superintendent? Or, wait, are you talking about your submission?
I'm going to start the sentence, get all the way to the end. There were concerns raised to me by members of the DEIAC, or members of, sorry, members of this board, that it felt like the recommendations sounded like directives. It's like you're challenging what I'm saying, because-
Yes, they're advisory committee.
This is my lived experience, yeah, you're giving, they're giving us recommendations, which was great, but some board members were thinking that they sounded like directives, so I thought, why don't I change the language a little bit, so that it's less like a directive that they're in, with expectations that the board will deliver, or that the superintendent will deliver?
This is very, very, I'm just going to say, very disappointing.
How so?
Because we value diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the work that we're doing, and we supposedly pass this, and we have these goals and everything, and we're trying to diminish, because you are, like, uncomfortable with what's recommended, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure you heard me, so I don't know if saying it again will help or not, let me know. Susan, will saying it again help clarify it or not?
Yeah, you can tell me why you feel that the DEIAC recommendations are hurtful, or any board member.
Who said hurtful?
I don't know, like, challenging or-
Susan, I guess it would help.
Demanding, like, I don't understand where you're coming from, or the other board member, so.
Thank you. I shared what I shared, the experiences I heard, that if, that some members of the board were feeling like the recommendations, I'm going to stop talking at this point and not engage anymore in that because of your smirks, so let's do this on some other, some other day, we've got other things to do.
Well, I value DEI, and I always will, and I think you all should too.
Nobody has said anything diminishing about DEI here at the table at all. Yeah, that's, those aren't even my words, I came up, I just said, again, so I'll just sit out the rest of this conversation until we get on to the next thing.
Okay, so is there anyone else before we move on to item C? Is there anyone else who has anything at this point? There will be another discussion, so, you know, feel free to bring concerns or questions to the next read, and then we can move to item C.
Thank you. Item C is the board meeting calendar, and it's pretty pro forma at this point, because March has, spring break, when we usually have our meeting, I think the suggestion was, and I'm in concurrence with it, that we have five months in the year that have only a single meeting, and March would be one of them now.
I say we move it to consent for the next meeting.
Move it to consent?
I am in concurrence.
Thank you.
I did double check the dates.
Moving it to consent, the next thing is, I'd like to entertain, oh, geez, we skipped over a whole thing. Speaking of consent, I don't know if we have a heck of a lot of time for administration or board updates, but I'll, I guess I throw myself on the mercy of the rest of the board to be as brief as possible, because I really would like to get to the closed session so we could have our lawyer talk to us. And we're down to one item now, we're going to just have the one item, complaint against a school employee.
I'll go super quick. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of the Foundation for Celine Area Schools in their fall luncheon and fundraising. I saw people who have volunteered for years, I saw new faces, and it was wonderful to hear all the grants, so thank you for all their hard work.
Usually the facility, usually the process is the administration starts, so, that's okay.
Sorry, I'm really tired, and I apologize to you, I didn't mean to do that.
He's going to pass, I'm going to pass, Rad, or Tim?
The Community for the Support of the WISD, Miller.
That was awesome. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just send, I would just like to extend my best Thanksgiving wishes to our staff and to people who deserve a break, so I hope they enjoy it.
I just wanted to thank the veterans who came to this, thank veterans in general, and the veterans who came to speak to students on Veterans Day, including my father-in-law.
Oh, that's great. JM or SE? No, that day, Susan?
I want to thank the CAB, Sex Education Advisory Board, and the recommendations that they made, I really appreciate that, it's been 25 years in the making, yeah. So, so, very, very thankful for their work. And November, there's Trans Awareness Week, and also, actually, I think we're in this week, Transgender Awareness Week, and then also Transgender Day of Remembrance will be November 20th, and I just want to recognize that, and I'm thinking of all of the families, children, adults who are transgender, and what they may be going through right now, and let them know that I'm, they're in my heart, and I support them.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to authorize a consent agenda as printed.
So moves, Taban.
JS.
Support, Miller.
JM, favorably, say aye.
Aye.
Great, seven zero, thank you. Items on next agenda, sir?
Yes, I'll be giving a state of the district end of year report.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, we have time for public comment, oh my gosh. We have three, actually, and you're not it, Shelby Wrightmeyer, who I believe is not here, Scott Lem, yep, there he is. I was starting to wonder if that might be you. Thanks, Scott.
Green light. Hi, my name is Scott Lem, lifetime resident of Celine, I have two children, one alumnus, and one middle schooler in the system, and first off, I want to apologize, this is my first time ever to a Board of Education Celine meeting, don't necessarily think I chose the right one. I wasn't coming here with any sort of agenda, any motion or idea of speaking, it was only partway through the beginning, I felt I needed to speak up. And what I want to say, first off, Carol DiGlio, the HR session, I spoke to Carol earlier, that was an extremely well-done presentation. I work with Fortune 1000 companies, I work with public, private, I work with executives all over the world, and that was an exceptional presentation, not just the materials, but the way it was delivered, I would hire you in a heartbeat. It was just well done.
Can't take her.
No, please don't.
But I think it's important to, you know, call out where you see things are exceptionally done, so I wanted to make sure that that was spoken and made public, and not just personally spoke to you. The other thing is, is the beginning of today's discussions, and, what are we, five hours into this? The addition of an item, this group appears highly dysfunctional at times, and I say at times, because I've only been here once, and so I would say at least twice during this session, it's been highly dysfunctional. So when those topics come up, and from someone from the outside is watching, it doesn't give a lot of confidence in what we see and what's delivered. And with that, when a request is to have an external group to come in to give a review, someone from the outside, such as myself, enjoys that, because we don't have a lot of faith and trust when we see dysfunction. So I just wanted to share those thoughts, that's everything I had, thank you.
Appreciate that, Scott. Are you related to Bethany?
Yes, she's my wife.
Tiffany Alexander.
Okay, I'm going to read it again. The OMA does not apply to committees and subcommittees composed of less than a quorum of the full public body if they are merely advisory or only capable of making recommendations. So it is literally because the DEIAC is an advisory committee that we can only make recommendations, that's literally why OMA doesn't apply. So during the last DIAC meeting, let me first say, it is so deeply and deeply offensive and harmful to hear the words that our co-chairs somehow went against the Board of Ed. No, our co-chairs asked and got clarification to move forward. It's deeply offensive, you guys are lucky to have Ryan Kerr, so let me go with that to begin with. Second of all, we had a meeting on these things, and during that meeting, it was said that any of these recommendations, if they're problematic, they don't have to be accepted. That that's what was said, that they don't have to be accepted, that these were just suggestions, and we could move on. So to hear that there's other board members who apparently don't believe in transparency, and don't want to come forward and say, we have a problem with the word recommendations, that that's something that is now, that cannot be walked back. When you say this doesn't diminish and it doesn't harm, I'm actually on that committee, and it does diminish, and it does harm. That's how it feels to me, okay? I recognize that doesn't really matter, but that's how it feels, and I know there are other committee members who also feel that way. We also feel singled out, and with good reason, because we have been continuously singled out. So I also propose a question, which I know you can't answer right now. We were berated, abused, told off, and publicly humiliated over administrative guidelines, and told repetitively, it's because Neola does it. Now, I just sat here and listened to somebody say, well, Neola doesn't really do the guidelines. So my question is, when did they stop? Because the way we were treated over that, for everybody here to just, like, have this look on their face, like, that never happened, is astounding, and confirms, like I said, the fact that we feel it diminishes it, really doesn't matter. Now, I'm going to go on to, in terms of an independent review. It needs to be independent, because otherwise, there's no integrity. Somebody working for the district, and having a supervisor in the district, cannot give an unbiased review. Somebody who has any association with the district has implicit bias, if not explicit. An independent review, for multiple reasons, have been asked for multiple times, and the problem isn't actually solved, because you said, as Trustee Miller said, you had it with lacrosse, you had it with volleyball, apparently, the problem is continuing. So thank you very much, and next time, I hope maybe you consult the members of your committee on what feels harmful.
Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter closed session at 11:35 PM, with the intent to reopen by 11:59, for the purpose of disciplinary action against a school employee 8A, and the rest of that motion is gone. Thank you, Tim Austin. Support from anyone?
Mills?
Oh, JM, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you very much for seeing through this, we'll, oh, they're going to stay, oh, yes, I'd like to ask Carol, please to stay, are you all going to stay? Excellent.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the negotiated settlement as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
L. Gold.
Support E. Step.
S. E. Step. All in favor, please say aye.
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 A vote? Thank you. Seven zero. Thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, this morning's meeting, at 12:11 and a half.
So moved. Oh.
Time.
We don't care, we don't care.
Without objection. Thank you. Thank you all. It's a wrap.